Recording in progress.
Great, good morning, or good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for SIO Township of September 12th, 2022. And with that, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Phone call, please.
Good. Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Hume.
Present.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present.
Commissioner Chang, present. Commissioner Calderon.
Present. Commissioner Sharma is absent. Right. Then the next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Would anyone like to revise or I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as posted. Moved by Commissioner Hyde in support by Commissioner Hume. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda moves forward as published. Next is public comment. And we have no public hearings this evening, so this is the sole opportunity for the public to address the Planning Commission. I'm sorry. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. You think I... Okay, so if this is public comment for anything that's not on the public hearings this evening, and the public hearing is for the Nicholson rezoning of C4 to I-1. So anything that is not concerning the Nicholson rezoning. People wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters which are not on the public hearing portion or seek information on any other matters such oral presentations or comments shall be limited to three minutes. Except a representative group or an organization shall have five minutes to address the commission. Typically, we start with those who are in, present in the audience and then move to those who are present online. So if there's anyone that would like to address the Planning Commission on anything other than Nicholson rezoning, please come forward and sign in. And also, the applicants will be able to, for any of the business items, give a short presentation to the Planning Commission. So just wanted to make sure people knew that. And yeah, there should be some, sign in for the public comment portion.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to discuss the zoning for Ann Arbor Arms. And I would like to speak in support. I'm a SIO Township resident and I'm a recent member of Ann Arbor Arms. And I would like to speak in support of their petition. I think...
Yeah, and if you could just introduce yourself.
My name is Mark Altamare. Sorry. I think Mr. Rose is going to make a very cogent persuasive argument in a minute, but I just want to support that. I think if there are concerns about the mixing of alcohol and firearms, those are very valid concerns. Those are very, those are basic lessons that anyone who is acquainted with firearms learn. And I think that Ann Arbor Arms is a place where very serious and conscientious people go to practice and learn and trade in their, in the firearms community. And if there was ever a concern about mixing alcohol and firearms, you're probably more dangerous in Meyer walking down the aisle than you are in Ann Arbor Arms or anywhere close to that. It's a very disciplined community, and I think the owners and operators have done everything and will do everything to make sure that it's a safe environment. I think they're providing employment in our community, and they're doing, they're trying to do everything right, and they will continue to do that. So I would like to encourage the commission here to rule in favor of their petition. That's all.
Thank you.
Anyone else present that would like to address the Planning Commission? Welcome.
My name's Whiteford. Ann Arbor Arms is a very well-run establishment. But they're not the first ones that are asking to have alcohol and firearms in the same vicinity. The Detroit Gun Club's been doing it for 50 years. Western Wayne Conservation Club, same thing. You have alcohol and you have firearms. Most of the times, if someone is, is going to drink, they put something on your wrist or your hand and make sure that you do not go to the gun range or have any other privileges other than that bar at the time. So I think somehow they'll figure it out. I'm pretty sure. Again, past, past practices with those other gun clubs are very secure. The shooting community is very tight-knit group. They respect firearms and alcohol. They do not mix. That's guaranteed. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present? Please.
Hi, my name is Sean Spinner. I'm a Washtenaw County resident and a fairly frequent patron over at Ann Arbor Arms. The legal gun owners, the legal gun community, do not play around with drugs, alcohol, and guns. We have that stuff. We are very self-policing. We take our firearms and our safety very, very seriously. And we also police ourselves and each other. I've gotten to know some of the staff over there pretty well, especially the last few months. And they're very serious, very straightforward people. And I have no doubts that they will do everything they need to do to keep everybody safe and to keep anybody that's had any drugs or alcohol away from any firearms after they've consumed any beverages. And I'm also sure that they will limit the number of beverages people will be allowed to have, not only for safety there at the premises, but safety on the way home as well. So I encourage you to support this because not only will Ann Arbor Arms be policing this, but the other patrons there will be policing each other as well.
Anyone else that's present in the Township Hall today? All right, we'll go online.
Okay, we have seven people in our virtual audience. Not including the head of the township. There are seven folks. One person does have their hand up at this point. That is Kathleen Brandt. So, Miss Brandt, you now have the floor.
Hi, this is Kathleen Brandt. I'm a SIO resident, citizen. Typically, I'm on-site for these meetings, but I wore myself out in a protest at Township Hall today regarding selection of the next trustee. What we are protesting is that we believe this should go in front of the voters as part of a special election. So that's neither here nor there for your committee, but usually I'm there. What I really want to talk about is, I had sent correspondence regarding the Crossroads project. I sent evidence that shows that Mr. Kettler, as soon as he got a preliminary approval from the Planning Commission, he immediately put that property up for sale with a real estate broker. And I had sent documentation of that. I was very surprised that that was not in the board packet, in your packet, rather, tonight, because I sent that on August the 30th. So I really don't understand why that didn't make tonight's packet. I think it's important for the commissioners to know the intentions of this developer. He's not intent on maintaining, he's not intent on keeping the property. He's not intent on pursuing affordable housing because he calls out the high rents. And so I want all the commissioners to see the documentation that I sent. So Chair Calbertson, do you plan on putting that into the packet so the other commissioners can see that?
Yes, I just want to respond that it was shared with the commissioners and I will make sure that it, and I did not check what got uploaded for correspondence, and I will email our support staff to be sure that it gets uploaded. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And hopefully, we can discuss that further at the next meeting. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
It's time. There are no other virtual hands up.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the Planning Commission on anything other than the Nicholson rezoning this evening? I don't see anyone else here. Do we have anyone else online?
No one else has their hands raised.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Make a motion.
A motion by Commissioner Hume, supported by Commissioner Hyde to close public comment. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Public comment is closed at 7:12. All right, communications and correspondence. We did receive a letter regarding Ann Arbor Arms, or an email, I should say, and also the email from Kathleen Brandt on the Crossroads. Did anyone else receive any other correspondence? All right. And then if anything else comes in tonight while we're meeting, we'll upload that to be included in the packet.
Chair Calbertson, there was also a handwritten letter, I believe, last Friday you got that.
That was in the packet, the actual Arbor Arms packet, yes. Yep, thank you. With that, we'll continue on, and we do have a public hearing this evening. And it is OA number 22005, Nicholson rezoning C4 to I-1. And I'll declare the public hearing open at 7:14. And typically with public hearings, the way that we go through them is we have the applicant present. Then we go to our consultants. I don't think engineering necessarily will weigh in on a rezoning, but our planning consultant. And then any specific questions of fact from the Planning Commission, and then we open it up to the public. So with that, welcome, and please introduce yourselves, and we look forward to your presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Tom Covert. I'm with Midwestern Consulting. I'm here tonight with Nick Donafrio from Grand Sacra. Share my screen. So we're here tonight before you to discuss with you the opportunity to rezone 7155 Jackson Ave. The site is currently zoned C4. We're looking to rezone it back to I-1. The property, as you can see here on this map, I'm going to zoom in a bit, we're on the south side of Jackson Ave. We are on the east side of 3 L's Drive, which is a private drive that extends south from Jackson Ave. We are the site here between Thetford and Tractor Supply, a couple of key landmarks that you might see if you were visiting the site. The property is currently zoned, or I'm sorry, the property has a master plan designation of mixed-use office industrial. And according to the current SIO Township zoning map, we are currently zoned C4. And you'll also note that the property is within the Jackson Road overlay district. So again, what we're proposing is the rezoning from C4 to the industrial zoning classification consistent with the master plan. And that's really our request in a nutshell. Thank you.
Okay, just to add to, let me switch camera back here. So just to, I guess that's fine. Add on to the applicant's comments, this is a straight proposory zoning. In the past, we've had some rezonings that have been conditioned on certain applicant, limiting certain things. This is not a conditional zoning. Also, this is not a site plan. This is not a special land use. This is just a straight rezoning from, from the current C4 composite commercial to I-1 industrial. So what that means is that if it's, if the property is rezoned this evening, Planning Commission, one, let's start with the Planning Commission as the recommending body for rezonings. All rezonings are required to go to the elected officials after they leave the Planning Commission. Elected officials in this case, obviously, is the Township Board of Trustees. They will make the final approval or denial in this case for the rezoning. Base in part, their decision on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. If the property is rezoned, the applicant would then have to come before the Planning Commission with either a site plan, that map, that was one of the permitted uses permitted by right within the industrial district, or as a conditional use plan, and one of the uses they're proposing is found in the conditional use section of the I-1 industrial district. So this is the first step of at least two steps, maybe three, if it's a conditional land use, that they have to go through depending on the ultimate use of the property. Once a piece of property is rezoned, so this is unlike a PUD that we're kind of familiar with, that a PUD rezoning is based on a site plan. A straight rezoning does not have to have, in fact, really should not have a site plan attached to it because we couldn't hold them to a site plan even if they gave us one. Straight rezoning is simply that, it is rezoning the land from one designation to another. And so that, that's what the applicant's requesting. The applicant's engineer did a good job of kind of going through, you know, what's going on around the property, what the master plan is. So I'll summarize my comments to kind of talk about just a couple of different things. One of the things we like to look at in addition to zoning and master plans with property, around the property, what the surrounding property is being used for and zoned for. And if you're familiar with this property at all, currently it's a vacant site. I believe years ago, there was, I like to call it a quonset on this piece of property. I think Nicholson Honda used it for motorcycle storage years and years ago. But now it's just a vacant site. That structure's long been removed. To the north is the Jackson Boulevard. To the south of the site is an existing office industrial use. Interestingly, that property is on C4. That's the only surrounding property that has the same zoning designation as the applicant's. To the east of the site is zone I-1, and to the west of the site is also zone I-1. Across Jackson Road is also zone I-1. So the property is virtually surrounded by I-1 limited industrial zoning, except for the property directly to the south. Although I don't know for sure, it would be my educated guess that this property was on C4 in the first place because Nicholson Honda wanted to sell motorcycles from this property, and that's the zoning that would have allowed that kind of sense. Since that's long gone, the applicant is looking to do something different and move away from that type of use. So in our report, we have a series of findings of fact. So the first, never in zoning and land use, their finding of fact is that the property is surrounded by I-1 limited industrial and associated office industrial uses along the northeast and west. So that's not a small C4 commercial property. As was mentioned by the master plan, subject site and all the surrounding properties are planned mixed-use office industrial. So this property would be in keeping with the current Township master plan if, if the rezoning is granted. So finding a fact with regard to master plan, the subject rezoning from C4 composite commercial to I-1 limited industrial coincides with Township master plan designation of mixed-use office industrial of that future land use classification. There are some existing trees on the site. There don't appear to be wetlands or floodplains present. However, that's the kind of detail that we'll get into in more, you know, in more detail, I should say, at the site plan or conditional usage review. That's not a detail that we would normally get into for a straight rezoning. And as I mentioned, so on pages three, four, and five of our report, it's important that the Planning Commission understand that if the property is rezoned to I-1, that all of the uses that are permitted in the I-1 district could occur here. The applicant may have an idea of what they want to do. They may even tell us what they want to do. However, after the property is rezoned, they can sell it the next day. There's nothing that would prevent or require them to do what they're telling us. That's why we don't require a site. Because with a straight rezoning, it's just like any other zoning district within the township. You know, you can do whatever's permitted in that district. That's what we begin. So on pages three, and three, four, and five, I provide all of those things that are permitted for the I-1 zoning district, both permitted and conditional. I mean, typically, the I-1 zoning district allows light manufacturing-type uses. It's allowed office uses. As a conditional land use, it allows things like office warehouses, skilled trades contractors. Some minor retail sales warehousing actually requires, allows restaurants as special land use in our industrial district. But people don't, don't realize that our I-1 industrial district allows restaurants within that district. And a number of other, other ones including minor vehicle repair facilities and self-storage facilities. So there's, there's a number of uses that are permitted here. And as I mentioned, we just have to be, understand that in a straight rezoning, we cannot limit the applicant to any specific uses. With regard to traffic impact and site access, sites currently undeveloped, as we begin to understand what the applicant might want to propose on this site and see a site plan, it's premature to get into traffic concerns or traffic issues. I think we do have to recognize that this is on Jackson Boulevard, our, our primary thoroughfare within the township that was designed for intensive commercial type uses. So I wouldn't anticipate traffic impact being an issue, but that's something that we would address at the site plan. With regard to central facilities and services, again, these are things like sewer capacity, storm store, water, how the site is designed, fire hydrant location, things like that. Those will all be reviewed at the time we have a site plan. Right now, we don't have a site plan. So it's premature to get into those issues. On page five and six, we note the five factors that are contained within Section 36-462 of the SIO Township zoning ordinance. Those items talk about justification for a change, precedence of what might happen if this is, if this rezoning is approved, capability of the township to provide services if the property is rezoned, the effect of the rezoning on the value of property within the township or in adjacent areas, and the effect on the developmental policies of the township for other governmental units. Proposory zoning, in our opinion, could be limited to uses found within the I-1 limited industrial zoning district and would be in keeping with the Township master plan addressing final items specifically. And we believe that the five criteria for rezoning, we've reviewed them and found them to be either not applicable or having been acceptable, being met. Again, this is a straight rezoning in an area planned for industrial office uses. The applicant's proposing an industrial zoning. This is a we believe it meets those standards found within the zoning ordinance that we have to consider for a rezoning. So based on the comments of our review, we recommend approval of proposed rezoning from C4 composite commercial to I-1 limited industrial. And on page six, we list the eight findings of fact that I've just gone over. And if the Planning Commission would like, as part of your motion, if you were to recommend approval of this rezoning, you could use those five, excuse me, those eight findings of fact. Questions that you might have?
Are there, thank you. Are there specific questions of fact? We'll get into discussion after public comment, but are there specific questions either of the applicant or Mr. LeWan from Planning Commission members? Okay, with that, we'll go to public. And if there's anyone present who would like to address the Planning Commission on the Nicholson rezoning, if they would come up and sign in, please. I do not see anyone present coming forward.
At the present moment, there are no virtual hands up for this rezoning request. Get no, no virtual hands up from the online audience.
All right, with that, I'll then entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Are we discussing, are we making our comments during the public hearing? Yeah, just clarifications of what could be anything. All right, so there's a motion by Commissioner Hyde to close the public hearing. Is there support?
I'll second.
Support by Commissioner Hume. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are closing public hearing at 7:28. With that, we'll start a discussion. Planning Commissioners.
Just to clear, Mr. LeWan. No matter what they want to do with the property, they have to come back and report to the Planning Commission with the site plan, even if it meets, even if they're not asking for deviations from, from the requirements of the zoning.
Yeah, yeah, this is a
We'll see it no matter what.
Yes, it's a vacant use property. Any structure, any new commercial structures on vacant property at a minimum require a site plan or a new [inaudible]. Any new commercial structures on vacant property at a minimum required a site plan or a zoning application.
Other comments from Commissioners?
I have maybe just one for the petitioner. You know, I think Mr. Wong did a good job explaining it. Is there any chance you'd like to indicate why you would be rezoning it to some type of industrial use and not keep it commercial?
Yeah, what's the use?
Yes, thank you for that question. Commissioner Chang, we are currently pursuing the notion of a climate-controlled contemporary self-storage facility at the site. If you recall, there was a project to our west behind Tractor Supply that was a PUD that had a climate-controlled self-storage facility as a part of that PUD. And that has since, with their recent amendment, been removed from the project. So what we're contemplating is a very similar use and size on this park.
So that wouldn't be a conditional use under C4, it would have to go to the I-1.
So, but it's a conditional use under I-1?
Conditional use, yes. So yeah, not permitted at all on C4. But it's a conditional use in I-1. So if they, now again, just so the planning commission is clear.
What's a conditional use in I-1?
What's that?
What is a conditional use in I-1?
So the planning commission is clear. Although the applicant has indicated their intention of a self-storage facility, we can't hold that. They can, once it's rezoned, they can do anything permitted in the district, just so we're clear about that. But if they were to come forward with a kind of a self-storage facility, that falls under one of the uses contained in the I-1 district as a conditional use. So what that means, conditional uses are those uses that may be considered in a district, in this case, the industrial district. But the township has some discretion and approval. That's different than a use permitted by right. In a rezoning district, there's two lists of uses. There's a list of permitted uses and a list of conditional uses. The difference is that if it's in the permitted use list, as long as they meet the minimum setbacks, height, you know, square footage of building, parking, the township has no discretion but to approve it. A conditional use allows the township to take a really closer look to determine if what the applicant is proposing is appropriate in this particular location. And if you do not believe that the use is appropriate in this particular location, based on the standards of zoning ordinance, the township may do one, two, a couple of things. You may, because it's discretionary approval, in theory, the planning commission and ultimately the township board could deny the request. And/or if you thought it could meet the, if there's a possibility it could meet the conditional land use standards, the planning commission and ultimately the township board could place conditions on the use to help it meet these standards. So this is one of the few cases that the planning commission and the township board can actually place your own conditions on a development proposal. They don't have to be conditions that the applicant wants. They don't have to be, you know, conditions that the applicant even agrees to. If you believe that the conditions that you are proposing help this use meet the standards of the zoning ordinance, you can place them. I'm getting well ahead of myself because we don't have any plan in front of us. I don't know what this looks like, I don't know what they're proposing. But Commissioner Wong, you asked a question, so that's
Can I just follow up to that? Apologize, so is that, I want to make sure I understood what you just said. With regard to the conditional uses, not the permitted uses. The permitted uses, we can use it as permitted. The conditional uses, does the discretionary approval by the planning commission apply to permitted uses? Okay, and so it only applies to conditional uses? And if it is a conditional use, you're saying that what are you saying, that the planning commission could reject the applicant's conditions and ask for their own conditions?
Yeah, the applicant may not have, is likely wouldn't be proposing any conditions.
Right.
It would just be, it would be during deliberation. For example, if there's a home, not, there's no homes nearby, but let's say there is a home next door. The planning commission could say, yeah, this is okay, but we want a 25-foot heavily landscaped buffer to screen this home next door. So those are the kind of things that you, as a planning commission, can make sure that this use is not having an impact on adjacent neighbors or the township gender. I mean, that's why uses are listed as conditional, because they may, in certain circumstances, have a negative impact on adjacent properties. Not all this, but in some cases.
So a concern in your memo, when you make your recommendations and you go through the five factors. And you indicated number one, in particular, number one and number five. I mean, you're just hearing about the idea for the use of the property this evening?
I have
Like I am?
No, I've heard from the developer that was there.
Okay, and you didn't, but you didn't, you put in your email that you did not know. On page three of your email, the applicant has not indicated the potential future use of the site.
Not officially indicated, anything. Not in the application, it's not in the application.
Oh, okay, it doesn't say application, it just says applicant. I figured that included your discussions with them. Has not indicated the future, potential future use of the site.
All we're looking at is a rezoning.
I understand that.
The applicant can say anything they want, and we can't hold them. So I don't even like to bring up what the applicant tells you, because they could walk away and sell it and we got some properties on I-1.
So, just so I understand, like the scope of what we're, our decision today. The planning commission must approve this rezoning request. So it's in our discretion to do that?
Correct, yeah, and there's certain criteria you're supposed to base a rezoning request on.
Based on the five factors.
And, yeah, the master plan.
Okay, yeah, I understand that. So, but what I'm trying to, to get my head around is how the use of the property would not be of consideration and we would want to take into account, let me finish, when reviewing these five factors. For instance, you, the first one is whether or not the requested zoning change is justified by a change in conditions since the original ordinance was adopted or by an error in the original ordinance. And then you indicated in your response to, your view of how responded, your responses, the proposed rezoning is offered to allow for development of the site. Okay, well, that's implicit, but new, that's, I don't know, that's a response to the factor, but new development and population growth have occurred since the zoning ordinance was originally adopted. So that, I guess that's responding to any changes.
And there's a lot going on since that was C4, you know, thirty years ago.
So I, to me, I think that what the land is going to be used for is important to the zoning commissioner, me as a commissioner. So I reject this notion that I should just rezon, I should exert my discretion to rezon without knowing what the property is being used for. So I'm having a hard time with that. And then, so I don't even know, if you didn't know what they were going to rezon, how you could even answer that factor as well as factor number five, because I think those factors address to what would be going on on the property. Does that make sense?
I understand.
I mean, you may not agree, but if my question makes sense.
Yeah, I understand your concern. This is a conundrum that planning commissions throughout the state of Michigan have. If something, we can't hold them to it, they can tell us anything they want to tell us. And that's why I list all
Oh, I get the fact that they are able to change their mind. But when I'm addressing the issue of rezoning, I want to know what they, at least something in the ballpark of what they
We cannot hold them to it, we can't.
I understand that, I understand that part. But in my deliberations, as I deliberate, a rezoning, why am I rezoning? I'm rezoning for a purpose, not because there's more population growth. I'm rezoning, maybe there's a reason that really relates to that or some, you know what I'm saying?
I guess they gave you the reason that there's a use that doesn't exist in the current
Okay, I just don't, I'm having a hard time divorcing that issue, those two issues, the rezoning and what the property use is going to be. Maybe I'm just being too particular.
Commissioner Hyde, do you have something?
Yes, Commissioner Moore, if I might offer this as my, the way I'm looking at it, any aspect of I-1 is, can be used. And so if we believe that all or any of I-1's uses are not appropriate, we could ask for, in this area, we could make a condition on our approval of not including this. But if, if we rezone it, it could be any one of the uses.
Right, it could be any one of OS too.
And so it's, what we assume, what I assume is that whatever the purpose that they want, it was not included in C4, but it was included in I-1. So I have to think about whatever I-1 could include. If I don't find I-1 to not be appropriate, then I would withhold it. Or if you did.
So your view is that if we just look at the area, you're just looking at, is I-1 appropriate to the area?
Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah, and any of the uses of I-1, yeah, exactly.
But you don't know. Anyway, I get, I get what you're trying to say. But I hope you understand that I-1 also includes OS.
I mean, there would be some, there's certainly an argument to be made that this is a downzoner. What I mean by that is this is a zoning that allows less intense use. C4 is a pretty intense zoning district. And that it allows outside storage, contractors outside storage. So it allow a fence contractor or an excavator contractor, something like that, and have outlanded piles of stuff that they're selling. So there's something to be said that this is actually a less intense, you know, I-1 is, you know, truly I-1 in office, because office is, office is office. It certainly could be considered a less intense zoning district than C4. C4 also allows our auto dealers. So anyway, I throw that out there. This certainly could be argued that this is a downzoner, so let's carve it there.
Other Commissioners have comments? Thoughts if you want to share?
We're here.
I guess I have just a couple of comments. One, I can see, you know, that there's plenty of I-1 zoning around it. However, I, you know, it's one aspect of our master plan that wants this mixed use. I think the other thing that we talked about is, this is also within our water and sewer district. And along the Jackson Road corridor, we've talked a lot about, you know, wanting intensive uses, wanting mixed uses, wanting, you know, it's also placing employment and retail and all those things. And I-1 really is a less intensive use, as Mr. Wong pointed out. It also allows for like warehouses, you know, the storage, which aren't traffic generators. But you know, there's less employment involved oftentimes with these than a C4. So I think what we're really talking about is, you know, taking something that is C4, it's planned for something that is relatively intensive, something that will bring in employment, will bring in retail, and changing that to a less intensive use. So that's my issue. I don't think, you know, you can make all the arguments you want, there's I-1 adjacent and all this kind of thing. But from a philosophical standpoint of what the intent is for Jackson Road, is that what we want to do is change it to a less intensive use? And so I have some concerns with that.
Concerns with making it less intensive?
I do, I do. On, in water and sewer, on Jackson Road. And I think, you know, there, there's the option, it is a small parcel, so it isn't, you know, and it's, if you would say, frontage on Jackson Road is smaller, so, you know, whatever goes in there won't have a huge impact. I don't think visually, we still have, you know, we have the corridor and so forth. So from a visual standpoint, I think there are ways to deal with it. But it's just that, that master plan, you know, look at the intensity of uses and going from a C4 to a less intensive use. That's my kind of point there. So.
May I interest Mr. Culver? I want to thank you for letting me know what your idea is. I don't want to make you think I'm trying to put the box in, but what your idea for the place is. Because me, we think about that as Commissioners, the uses and how we want to, how we want to develop the Jackson Road corridor, for instance. And this issue of storage has come up before, as you are well aware. That particular project that you referenced early, but there was another project that came up not too long ago in another area. And so I believe we even encourage that applicant, if you and I met with them, to find us an I-1. But, so, you know, I would be supporting the request today, but I just wanted to know what, what we were I wanted to know what was going there. You know, I want to be able to plan as a Commissioner, you know, about what we're doing, what we're doing up and down Jackson Road, that's all. There's no mystery here. And I think that we do need to know that to look at, what's our plan for Jackson Road? I think the points that you make are very, I mean, I had not even thought of that, Commissioner Culver, because I just wasn't thinking like that, but I think it's a good point. I guess the question in my mind, in thinking of that, is on three acres, how much heavy industrial are we going to get? I don't know that that matters, maybe that's a stupid question. Okay.
No, I don't think that's stupid, but any other thoughts on, or what your
You know what, just another question maybe for Mr. Culver. Is this vacant site been marketed as commercial for years and no takers? Or has it just been sitting vacant with?
My understanding is it's been for sale for a number of years as commercial property, yeah.
Several years, it's been on the market listed as C4 and no takers.
Any other thoughts?
I'd like to thank Commissioner Moore for studying the report so attentively. Appreciate that, doing your due diligence. I, you know, I still think all that says that I don't see any reason why it should be I-1. It's a reasonable request.
Okay, so then, go ahead and introduce your motion.
I'll make a motion, I guess, if I can figure out how to say it.
We got some motion, yeah.
Okay. All right, that was Commissioner Moore's human.
Let's try it, let's try it. All right, I'd like to make a motion to, just read it verbatim? No, I don't do it.
Yep, you can do that.
Oh, I can? I'd like to make a motion for ordinance amendment number 22005 Nicholson rezoning from C4 composite commercial to I-1 limited industrial. Based upon the information received from the applicant reflected in the minutes of this meeting, I still don't know. The planning commission finds the ordinance amendment number 2205 Nicholson rezoning from C4 composite commercial to I-1 limited industrial rezoning request received by the township meets the informational requirements of section 36-461 and the factors found in section 36-462 of the zoning ordinance and the conditional rezoning factors found in section 36-463 and recommends approval.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this, sorry, this is a cut and paste, it's the last bit of that. Yeah, this, sorry, this is a cut and paste, it's the last bit of that. Or it should, it should have ended at 36462 of the zoning ordinance, and recommends what, what you're going to recommend. But the conditional rezoning factors, that's a, that's a holdover from previous, sorry.
Yeah, so you wanted to say the conditional factors is outlined in the memo?
No, there, there's, that has to come out of the motion. That, that's a different kind of rezoning. That's for conditional.
So get rid of conditional rezoning factors?
Yes.
All the way to the end, right?
Totally, yeah. Section 36463 references conditional rezoning. That was a mistake.
Sorry, so 36463 should also be reminded, is that what you're saying?
And, and I think we should cite the findings of fact in the Carlisle-Worthland Worthland Report dated 8/25.
Sorry, I didn't caught time, followed you there.
You can just reference that.
Or do you want me to reference that?
At the very end.
At the very end.
Just before your statements.
Okay, so, what, okay, so what I'm going to do is just, okay, so, and the factors found in section 36462 of the zoning ordinance, and findings of fact in the Carlisle-Worthland Report dated 8/25/22, and recommend, recommends approval. That's the final motion? Okay, support that. Commissioner Hyde? Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, please, Secretary Sheng.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Hume?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheng?
Yes.
And Commissioner Culverston?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so moving on to our unfinished business, and that is Ann Arbor Arms rezoning I-1 to C-4. We've had a lot going back and forth tonight. So if the applicant would like to come forward and?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hume. I've been asked to prepare, I prepared a little bit of a written statement. I'll provide some color commentary around that.
Yeah, if you could introduce yourself.
Oh, absolutely. So my name is Greg Rose, and I'm the owner of Ann Arbor Arms. We've been in business for over 10 years, and obviously seven of those in Scioto Township. And this is the facility that's specifically referenced in our Going the Other Way, I-1 to C-4. So even though I was not in attendance at the last session, I first absolutely want to acknowledge the concern that people have and, and expressed and commented to me both by my team, as well as Doug LeWan, your consultant. And you're absolutely right. Alcohol and firearms are bad micks, and that's why currently at our facility, we do not allow it. We do have events where alcohol is served, but it's always done after anything to do with the range. You know, the Ann Arbor shooting community, it's very social. We want to be able to provide a facility that not only is safe, but also provides that ability to do some socializing, but always after the range activity. And we closely monitor this. Now that said, I, there are a few things I want you to understand or know about Ann Arbor Arms that may not be common knowledge in the marketplace. So one, we're very closely regulated by the federal government, specifically the ATF. We have federal firearm licenses, we actually have two. And, and, and they're basically tracked and monitored by the ATF. And so, and we cannot be in business unless we have those. We have a very, very close relationship with the ATF. In fact, they highlight us as a pilot organization where they test new procedures, new technologies. And in fact, we're one of the first ranges in the Midwest to go to the digital technology use, and using their tools. And they sometimes bring other organizations in, into our, our facility because they view it as, we do it the right way. We're very focused on safety and education, and they're very supportive of that. And we would not do anything to jeopardize our relationship. Second, we, we, we have multiple contracts with local law enforcement, obviously including the Ann Arbor Police, Washamow County Sheriff, the U of M Police, and the Detroit Metro Police Force as well, at Detroit Metro Airport. We would not do anything to jeopardize those either. Third, we are charter members of University of Michigan's Institute for Firearms Injury Prevention, and we are the only industry group that's currently on their community board. And we're being, we're actually being asked to take more of a leadership role with them in that organization because of our focus on safety and education. And same thing, we would not do anything to jeopardize that relationship. It's very important to us. So our commitment to the board, as well as the community, is to continue to monitor the use of our entertainment pavilion area and, you know, make sure that it continues to support local businesses and the community, but safely. And to make sure that alcohol use and firearm range use does not mix. Specifically to that, we want to do a couple of things and make sure that this group is aware of it. One, we will maintain a full-time pavilion manager on site for any event. And really, their job is to act as a proctor and monitor activities that go on at the pavilion. Second, we will add into our pavilion contract a clause prohibiting the use of range activity after attending a pavilion event. And we can monitor that, because they will be sitting there. At the same time.
What was it, the clause saying what?
That we will have, we will prohibit the use of any range activity after attending the pavilion event. And we'll, we're able to monitor that, actually two ways. Both through the proctor that will be there, as well as from the staff inside the store. So they'll be aware that the event is going on, and they'll pay attention to that. They actually have to do that on a daily basis, because obviously on, on Jackson Road and the surrounding areas, there are liquor stores, there are restaurants with alcohol being served. And so we have to monitor that on a close basis so that no one can use the range if, if we suspect or have any sense that there's alcohol or drugs involved prior to coming to that. And we've actually had to escort out or kick out several patrons that did come in and we did suspect that they were under the influence. We will also post a sign during these events that the pavilion participants cannot attend, or engage in range activities after they comes, consumption of alcohol. We'll be really reinforcing that. And then lastly, we've acquired a special insurance policy with a company that actually does this for other light businesses in the firearms industry. So they have best practices that will be following around that within the contract and so on. And so we want to make, you know, we want you to be aware that we do have specific insurance to, to address those concerns. Our view is we're not breaking any new barriers. There are actually a lot of facilities, as Mr. Reardon mentioned before, in this area where they do have bars or restaurant, or alcohol being served at their training facilities. And just like they do, we'll closely monitor that going forward. So that's my opening comment. And then I, I prepared to answer any questions you may have.
You, you can go first. If you would like.
Mr. Rose, how are you?
Just fine.
You indicated that in your, during your events that you have now, where you, your social events, that your ranges are closed. Your range is closed, so nobody could?
No, no, if you've, once, so when we have an event where alcohol is involved, like a social event, you, you can shoot first, but then you cannot shoot after you've participated, and obviously consuming alcohol. And we monitor that.
Okay, so the range is open when you have those events? And you anticipate that the range would be open when this exterior pavilion?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And one of your employees, I can't remember his name, who presented it last time?
I think it was Tim.
Indic, okay, indicated to us that, that people would be coming into the, your store up from the outside activity to be able to use the restrooms and stuff. Is that correct?
That's right.
Is that a participant? Okay. And how will the monitor, say, you're going to have on site for any events, how would that monitor be able to tell what the person that left and went inside is doing?
Well, they, I mean, the monitor there can, will, you know, reinforce the messaging. If you hold the event, whoever's signing the contract at the event, they, they recognize if there's, there's a clause in that says no alcohol, right? And, but there's no telling whether they're going to tell their participants in that event that, you know, hey, if you drink, you can't, you know, go in and shoot. So we'll have some.
Let me slow you down, Mr. Rose, make sure, Mr. Wood, you said, your contract with the contractor, the event contractor, will, will say that they cannot have alcohol during the event?
No, they cannot, they cannot use the range if they participated, you know, once they, they have that event, that's correct. And so the, but we don't know if they're going to tell their guests that that's a rule. And so the proctor, part, part of the proctor responsibility is to let people know that that's the rule. We'll also have a sign there that states that. And then the team will be aware that there's an event going on. And they'll closely monitor, just like they do any other patron that comes in. We are always on the lookout for that. The ATF requires that we, you know, watch people.
This is what I was going in the air.
Right, so they, we, we look for behavior, we look for alcohol smell, we look for marijuana. I mean, you know, all, you know, I could list, you know, all that stuff. But they, their job is to monitor the people that come to the range. They have to sign in, they have to provide ID. And during that process, the staff is evaluating that customer. And if there's any behavior that is not consistent with, you know, someone that has not been drinking or whatever, they're asked not to, not to, to go into the range. And we, we've done it multiple times. We have multiple patrons that have been told, no, you cannot, you know, go into the range. And then in fact, we've had to escort several people out of the range because of that.
As, I just want to make sure that I understood what you just said. What you mean when you just said was that your contracts, or that your, is it a contract with the ATF? Or is it a license, or what do you?
It's, it's, it's regulations.
So the regulations that you have to follow require you to monitor and require you, that's your, to keep track of individuals and what their behavior is.
That's correct.
Does it require you to monitor for drugs and alcohol?
Well, for any sense that they might be under the influence, then we have the right to say, no, you cannot participate in the activity.
That's good, because it's not just going to be a policy, this is a requirement from the ATF.
From the federal government, that's correct.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And because individuals actually have to come up and register at the desk, we have, you know, we're, you know, two feet, three feet from them. We, you know, that's how the team's been trained to see them, or to monitor that.
And that's the entry point to leave then?
No, not, so someone could come into the store and buy, do the retail shopping. The range is in the back, and then there's a big counter that you have to come up to, to actually shoot. You have to hand over your ID, there has to be a background check on the individual in order to go through it, unless, unless they're already in there. And so, but you still have to come in and register that you're going into a range. So that the team has the opportunity to be up close and personal with individuals to monitor that. Now, people have come into the store and just done retail shopping, the same situation. If we notice it, we will ask them to leave. But, you know, to say that, you know, are we 100% catch everybody in the retail store? No. But do I think we catch everybody at, at the range? Excuse me, there's a much better chance that that's the case.
So, but people coming to the event would not be coming into your store. They'll be coming from outside to the event area outside, correct?
That's correct, that's correct. In, in our perspective is because.
Trying to get my sense of what the monitoring is all about.
Yeah, that's right. So in, in our perspective too, is because they'll be at a specific event at our pavilion, it's a lot easier to recognize those individuals and see where they're, you know, where they're going versus they were at a, a drinking establishment down the street, and then they come to the range. We have no idea where they came from. This will be a lot easier to, we actually have, we're able to more closely monitor those individuals because they're actually on our, you know, at that entertainment area. And then the other, the other piece, we also have range safety officers in the range itself checking this as well, so sort of double check. So you get checked at the counter, and then once you're inside, there's a full-time range safety officer in each of the bays that monitors safety as well.
The question, is there, with your events, I, I'm just thinking it's somewhat easy to have a guest list or a registration list that would be a way of, you know, actually monitoring then that those individuals who participated could not come into the range. I mean, rather than having to rely on, you know, oh, this, this person doesn't look like they didn't drink or whatever, but there would be a way of, of actually, you know, verifying that as opposed to by the site.
No, I completely understand what you're saying. The, the only concern I would have, and I'm not discounting what you're saying at all, because that's, that's an easy way to do it. But, you know, you know, any event, there are always going to be people that come in that maybe aren't part of the official guest list. So then, you know, then we don't know, you know, that they're part of that. But, you know, your point's well taken, that if there was a, a list, you know, that's easy enough to monitor.
A lot of times, people come in and they get, pick up name tags and they're checked.
Sure, absolutely.
They're checked off if they come.
Yeah, and so we'll, you know, and we're also going to be very upfront with the sign, but also kind of the messaging during the event. If you're consuming alcohol, you cannot use the range. So don't even, you know, don't go there.
Because enforcement's always there. The tricky one, isn't it?
Sure.
Okay. One other question that I have was, now, one of the things is, this is a use that go, this is, this goes with the land, all right? So there could be a different operator that comes in. And so a question is, and this has to do with the business, are all gun ranges regulated by the ATF?
Yes. Yes, and, and some do, some do better jobs than others in terms of sticking to the rules. But you're audited on a regular basis. So we're, we're audited several ways. One is, the ATF has really two major missions in life. So one of is, one of them is really understanding the, the history of every firearm. So owner to owner to owner to owner. So their job is very closely monitoring all the paperwork and all the legalese associated with that. So that's one thing. The other piece is making sure that your range is following, you know, safety protocols for, especially if you have a range versus just a store. If you have a range, there's an additional set of requirements around monitoring people, double checking ID. And there are a lot of rules around, if someone has a felon, it's actually pretty simple. If you have a felony, you can't shoot. But we do have people that come in and have a felony on their record, but they'll try and rent a gun to shoot. And because we, we have to do background checks on everybody that's not a member, because members have gone through that background check, you know, we, we check that on a pretty regular, we have to check it on every individual that comes into the range. We have a pretty good handle on, you know, who looks like they might be, you know, shady or causing, potentially causing trouble. The team has been trained in that. And then we get reinforcement from the ATF and their agents that come in on a regular basis to the range.
Follow-up question to the regulation. Are the audits, are they, those available to the public?
It's a fair question. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. They're, they're pretty regular. We've been, you know, and that's why we're held up as one of the pilot sites, because we, you know, do really well on that and. And as I mentioned before, the ATF brings potential future gun owner, gun range owners into our facility for tours to talk about, here's, here's some good practices that these folks use. Um, and then we're very closely aligned with some industry groups, specifically UCCA, which is kind of the, one of the competing groups to the NRA. Um, that, you know, and, and they have, you know, their focus is safety and education as well. And that's why we went out of our way to become part of the community board for the instituted firearm safety at U of M. It's a new entity, um, it's getting national recognition, and we appreciate the fact that we're representing the retail and range side of that as the industry, because we have some best practices and we're working with them around, you know, ideas around how to make firearm owner, ownership and use even safer, you know, going forward.
If they're not, if the audits aren't available to the public, would the, would you, I mean, if it was part of a conditional use, make those available to the township upon request?
I don't know if it's, you know, I don't know if that's publicly available or not, I mean, if it is, then I.
Fine, but if it's not, I, I'm just trying, I think our concern is, okay, it sounds like you guys are great operators. Um, and, and you do a good job, you know, you've, you've got contracts and so forth. So we have to look at worst-case scenario, you know, it gets sold, something happens, it gets taken over by, it's still regulated, but if, if the township receives a complaint or there are some issues, you know, we have a responsibility. And for, you know, the enforcement of the, um, conditional land use, so.
Safety of the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, I would, you know, say it's even akin to owning a bar, right? I mean, any, you know, you could be the best bar owner and following all the rules, and then you sell it to somebody and they get very lax, right? So it's, it's, I understand that, the premise or the concern that you have. Um, we're not going anywhere soon, um, but you're right, but I think the, you know, the concern is, you know, are all ranges, you know, monitored and regulated by the ATF, the answer is yes. So that's sort of the, the guiding, you know, that's sort of the keel, you know, if you will, going forward.
So, go ahead. I don't have any questions, I think I understand where you're coming from and appreciate your presentation, I wish you were here the first time.
No, no.
I'm a gun owner. And as I said to your other person who came last time, I bought both my guns from the original of the interberms. Um, so I'd be leaving them, if you have any. Um, and it's not about you or I or you that's going to go down and shoot somebody. So it's not about all the gun owners of America that do it right. The ones with the CPL or the ones that just have a hunting rifle or whatever. Okay, it's not about that. It's about what makes sense in a community where people live, um, that you can get the most safety. Now, I have to admit, I was not aware of other, um, you mentioned that there were other clubs or associations that did have. I was very shocked that you have events that you have alcohol. When I found out about that, I don't even know if, if that's something that's legal. But obviously, you know, what you educated me tonight, it's possible to happen, but, um, yeah, so I just, um, I just, you know, as a commissioner, I just feel like mixing guns and alcohol or guns and hate or guns and mental illness uh, for very, various reasons that we are all very aware of, is not a good idea. And it's not that you are not, you know, you've not tried to put in place the processes to make sure that everything is safe, I get that, and I appreciate that presentation tonight. So for those reasons, I'm not going to be voting against it, I'm only one commissioner, but I did want to speak to the issue, thank you.
Commissioner Hyde.
I had some non-alcoholic questions. But I wanted this to be, absolutely, the first thing I wanted was to get the answer that you, you regulated by the ATF on this type of thing, so that's good.
ATF?
That's right.
I thought you said ATO.
Oh, I'm sorry. ATF. So, um, it isn't necessarily to you, it's, it's to Mr. LeWan or to the rest of the commissioners. I'm, I'm reading, in reading the request, I believe that they're saying that C4 zoning, C4 will allow them to do public events in outdoor facilities on their property. And, and where I, so that's what I think they're trying to get done, so I have all the write-out. And the conditional uses include, for C4, include, that I, as I'm reading the ordinance, banquet halls and meeting facilities. Is this a banquet hall or is this a meeting facility?
The, the event spaces.
I understand that they're trying to fit their request in with what we require. So the outdoor event space is a banquet facility, it's a meeting banquet facility.
Yeah, so. That, that's really how, that's really how the applicant has, oops. Did something, did something wrong, LeWan? There we go. That, that's how the applicant does have a webpage, I don't know if it's still up, I haven't looked at it in a while, that kind of described this, uh, space.
Yes.
And they were, you know, talking about renting it for small weddings, so this is clearly an event space.
It is, and it doesn't say event space in the ordinance.
Yeah, well, there's no, so I just wanted to make sure that we were reading, that I'm reading the ordinance right, and that's.
Yes.
Okay, that is.
What I would also like to ask then is, in the notification process for the surrounding properties, was it clear, I don't know what was sent out, I don't know that we got that in the packet, if we did, I missed it.
It's in the prior packet.
That's the actual letter that went out. It shows what, who was notified, but it wasn't quite clear.
Oh, what, how it was, so they were just, it was probably just notification of a rezoning.
Yeah, it's a rezoning, I think it says conditional rezoning.
Yes.
That's correct.
So what I'm trying to get at is, was it clear to the businesses around it, because I think they're all businesses, that there was going to be an outdoor event space being rented out in their midst? And, and I put it sort of negatively there, but, but that's in effect what this is. And did they actually know that it wasn't just a rezoning, it was to allow something? And what that was?
And, well, so a couple of things, no, it didn't say that. So it said, um, I'll tell you what it says, I got from the ministry here. It says, um, it just says conditional, oh, wait, there, okay, go. It says conditional rezoning, 3.25 acres from I-1, London Industrial, C4 Composite Commercial. List of conditions can be viewed at the township hall. So if you received a, you know, they have a list of things that they, they're not just limiting themselves, by the way, for outdoor event space. Um, again, kind of similar to the last request, once it's rezoned, they may do any of the things that are permitted in the district. Now, they have limited themselves as a conditional rezoning to only, you know, limited number of things that are permitted in the C4 district. So, this, this did provide notice to neighbors that if they were interested, they could come and view the list that the applicant came up with. Now, I will also say that because this is a conditional land use, the applicant has to come back to us again, kind of similar to the last request. And your, your other question is that this is for the rezoning that has conditions placed upon it, and they will have to come back again with a new public hearing.
Oh, a new public hearing?
Yes, that's very specific to what they want to do, all conditional land use, they have to have another public hearing. And at that point, it will be very specific what they want to do.
Right.
And these conditions that Mr. Rose went over tonight, and, and I think you all have a copy on your desk, uh, one through five, maybe five isn't the appropriate condition, but one through four could be made conditions of the conditional land use, but maybe that's the next step, I'm not sure how to add those to a conditional zoning request.
Right.
But if they keep moving forward in the process, I can see these four things actually being the conditions that you would place them.
Definitely, at that time, I'd like, I think pickleball is right across the road from now.
That's directly north. Actually, they're going to be building directly north of us.
Directly north.
And their restaurant and their bar area will be basically facing our entertainment affiliate. And so we know them really well. So the intent is that by doing, going through the zone, rezoning, we can also be overflow for any event that they may, you know.
They didn't mention that. And so, I, I think what I'm getting at is though, I don't want to have two outdoor events competing for airspace.
Yeah, well, we're the, we're the only outdoor.
Well, they don't have people outdoors with events.
Well, playing pickleball.
Oh, yeah.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, um, I, I would like them to be aware and be able to voice any concerns they might have, I don't know if you're going to amplify music down there at the pavilion? Excuse me, amplified music?
There'll be music, but, but it, you know, so fair enough, yeah, fair, fair, yeah.
So I, I don't want to go there now, but I can just see that the neighbors might have a concern. Or at least, I would want them to know about it. It does sound like they will.
Right, and it, and it's, you know, and so we're, we'll follow all the noise ordinance regulation, we're aware of those. It's, it's industrial, other than pickleball, which is still, you know, entertain, you know, sports entertainment, whatever. But the rest of it is all light industrial, you know, around us. Here is manufacturing and others, and we know them really well, so, you know, they're excited that there's a pavilion there as well. So, um, you know, our view is from a sound perspective, it's not going to impact. And, and we've had a couple of our own internal events there, and, you know, if you, if you're, you know, you start coming toward the end of our driveway, you can't, you know, can't hear anything, we can actually point the sound down. And so it, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't radiate blast around.
Well, in the next phase, I'd like, we might have some more to say about the noise.
Sure.
Make sure we understand all that.
Understand.
It wouldn't really be necessary now, I don't think, but I, it was the neighbors, whether they understood it, so that they could voice it and concerns, but that could happen at the next step, I'll be. Sorry to go.
No, but that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, I can ask a question.
Please, go ahead.
Um, do the people who, uh, use the shooting range bring their own firearms into the facility?
They do, many do.
They bring their own firearms?
That's correct.
And I assume they also carry them out whenever they're exiting.
That's correct.
So if they're attending an event after attending the shooting range, presumably they have consumed alcohol and are in possession of firearms.
Uh, that's actually a great point. So the, the, so when you, um, own a firearm, it is against the law to be under the influence and have, and have a firearm with, you know, you know, to have that firearm um, in your, in your vehicle, um, you know, there are all, there are all sorts of rules around that. And so, um, yeah, and so, I mean, we have a very, very responsible group. And so typically, when they come in, um, you know, like they can't have gone out and consumed alcohol before coming to the range. Um, so typically, people will do their shooting, put the gun away, and then, you know, do whatever they're going to do. You can't carry it into a bar, you can't, you know, you know, there are all these rules around all that, and we, you know, and so.
They could carry it to your event, really?
They could carry it to the event, they could. And, but that's easy enough to handle, just say no firearms at the event. That's easy. I mean, we want, so what hap.
The problem is, is that it's not what you and I are going to do, it's, 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 you know, I'm repeating myself, but I'm concerned about people that won't follow the rules. I get the rules, I know the rules, girl, myself. You can only do what you can do as an individual owner.
And as the regulated responsibilities.
They don't, they come and audit, I think you said every two, they audit you every two years?
I mean, but they're, I mean, they audit on a, I'll just say a regular basis.
So they audit their, all of their paperwork with regard to their monitoring, how they're handling their equipments, guns, et cetera.
We, um, Mr. LeWan, you presented last time, is there anything else that you wanted to?
No, I don't have anything, do not have anything to.
Yeah. Although, you weren't here for the original public hearing. So do you want to just outline to, you know, what we're doing tonight?
Sure.
And then if it, the recommendation is for approval, there's other stuff, just to outline that, sorry.
This time, we're.
Let me save it.
But, but, but human wasn't here, yeah, all of a sudden.
Yeah, I'll just, just kind of quickly go through, so again, this is a rezoning. Um, if they get approved for rezoning, they have to come for conditional land use as well, so another, all other stuff, another public hearing will be required. This is a, uh, this is, this is a little different than the last rezoning we saw, this is considered a conditional rezoning. I know the terminology is confusing because we also have conditional use, this is not a conditional use. This is simply a rezoning where the, um, uh, applicant is placing conditions upon themselves. And many times applicants will do that so that some of the more, uh, undesirable land uses or uses that could cause impact to neighbors are kind of taken off the table. Remember how in the last, uh, the last rezoning, I was talking about, we can't really hold them to something. We can only, um, you know, if, if they're approved, anything that, anything that's in the district may be permitted. Since the applicant has voluntarily placed conditions upon themselves, we can hold them to the conditions that they have provided to us. And the conditions they provided to us are, they have, they have agreed to limit some of the uses. So we kind of, while there's still some uses that they are saying could happen here, and I'll read those out just so everyone's clear, what they still want to have the opportunity to do would be indoor recreation. You know, bowling, I don't think they have a roof or bowling alley, but let's just say bowling, gymnasiums, uh, ice skating, roller skating, tennis clubs, court sports, and similar facilities and similar recreational uses. So let's say, you know, they have a piece of property, let's say this little pavilion, five years from now, they don't want to do it anymore. They still want to have some uses available to them, so that's one, indoor recreation. Outdoor commercial recreation, they want to be able to do that, that's kind of similar to what the pickleball fellows are doing. And that's, that's the rezoning they got and the conditional use they, they received.
It's not the same.
Indoor, indoor theaters and performance space for artistic expressions, those are all uses permitted by right that they would still like on the table, that could occur there at some point. They are proposing, they're also proposing, um, uh, they would, on the table as a conditional use, uh, large-scale retail establishments, banquet halls, meeting facilities, which is specifically what they would like to do, standard restaurants, um, and that's it, so those, those, so basically six things that they propose to do. And if I can find it, there's a list here that shows, talks about the things that they're going to take off the table. Those are, uh, new and used vehicle sales and recreational vehicle sales that they, they have committed.
All those things that he, they could use, go through the whole statute.
Yeah, that he just, they crossed out, it's in the, it's in the.
Statute, yeah.
Yeah, they crossed out some stuff, so I don't know.
So they're limiting their, their use of it, all the things that are permitted under statute, just so the commissioner humans knows. And they're saying, we're not going to do any of that, this is what we're limiting our use to.
You know, a couple, a couple of more intensive ones are building material sales, they've decided to limit themselves garden centers, and, uh, thinking, you know, and, you know, gas and oil drilling, things like that, major vehicle repair facilities, self-storage facilities. So there's a number of things that they've taken off the table. So that's the difference between a straight rezoning and a, and a conditional resort.
Does that make sense to you? Okay.
Just to interject, they're taking it off the table for any future owner of the land.
Yeah. Yeah, right. These, these conditions will run with the property. So they, these, these restrictions that they've placed upon themselves will be placed upon any future owner. It's not just these folks. And if they, if they ever wanted to reinstate some of those uses that they've taken off the table, they'd have to come back from the planning commission for amendments to that rezoning.
And that's as opposed to the last project that came before us? That was just a straight rezoning?
Yeah. Other than that, we went through all the same kind of analysis of the last review looking at the surrounding properties. I think it's, I think it's important to note that the property directly north of them that was discussed, the Wilbury Pickleball, went through a similar rezoning just recently to allow for outdoor commercial recreation for pickleball court. That was also zoned I-1 industrial. They also proposed a conditional rezoning. They also had a conditional rezoning to I-1. So this property now is rezoned of the two C-4 properties adjacent to each other. So, so anyway.
And you're not trying to imply that these are similar projects?
No, I did not say similar zone. I said they went through a similar process.
Because sometimes I hear what you're saying, okay.
It is a similar process, similar zone, so they'll, they'll both appear C-4 in the zoning. And they both went through conditional rezoning. So other than that, and I don't know why, let's see, sorry. And we, our, our review did, our, our review, excuse me, is recommending approval of both conditional rezoning for I-1 industrial, C-4 capacity commercial based on the conditions placed by the county to allow just those six uses.
How does that get encoded? Let's say we do approval today. Does that get put, how does that get recorded, what the conditions are? Where, where is that?
It's, it's actually shown on the zoning map.
It's part of the mission, the motion.
No, no, I want to, we make the motion, where does it get recorded?
Yeah.
It's in our.
Because it's different than just a C-4, I see.
Our, our condition, we have a few conditional rezonings in the township and they show up. It'll show up as C-4 zoning with an asterisk, basically.
Do, do you file those with the county register of deeds? Because you can't file other things other than deeds. But that can be along with the deed and an addendum, an addendum to the deed, but you can see all kinds of documents that are filed with.
So you didn't, yeah.
But you don't do that as a matter of course.
I don't think we've ever done that. But they are, the zoning map shows conditional. So if someone's looking, you know, say 10 years, 15 years ago, say there's no longer a pavilion there, who knows what? Somebody wants to buy that property and say, oh, that'd be a great location for a dealership or something. And, and they're going to look at our zoning map and there's a shading or asterisk. I forget exactly how we do it. And hopefully they would then come to the township. What does the shading mean? Is this a C, is this a straight C? And it's, no, it's a conditional rezoning. And then at that point, we pull the minutes and the motion that the township board made and we find out the conditions.
I have a question for Mr. Rose, but it's appropriate.
I'll head kind of straight forward.
Sure.
Mr. Rose, would you be willing to give up the use of alcohol with this event?
No.
May I ask a question, Mr. Rose?
Please.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Do you believe, not what the law says, but do you believe that attendees of the shooting range who will then go on to consume alcohol on the premises will not be in possession of said firearm while under the influence of alcohol?
I, I believe that is, that that will not happen. And the member, we have a very responsible membership group. They follow the rules. I mean, that's, you know, that's the whole point, you know, that they're, they're following, these are law-abiding, they follow the rules. And, and so, you know, we'll, and we'll monitor, we will continue to monitor that just, you know, like any, you know, anybody. So there, you know, it's not really any different than, you know, they have a firearm, they go to the range, and they go to a liquor store across the street. And then they get in their car and they, they're drinking and they're driving. It's not any different from, you know, shooting at the range and then going down to Carlisle's.
Well, I understand that that is illegal. I was just asking if you.
Oh, yeah.
People would be committing illegal acts.
No, I, 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 I would be obviously shocked if that happened.
May I ask a follow-up? How will people get home from these events?
Um, the, well, you're assuming they're, they're drinking beyond the legal limit. And, and I would say, just like any, going into any drinking establishment, there, there are rules about driving and drinking as well. And so that, you know, none of those rules change. All we're doing is providing a venue, an entertainment venue, not different than, you know, the Zingerman Farms, Corman Farms, you know, where people rent the venue and you can have, they consume alcohol there. And, you know, they have to be responsible drivers, just like, you know, anybody else would be. You know, it's a very, it's a, in my mind, it's, it's a similar situation. We're just, we want to provide an entertainment venue for people. And, and part of the reason to go to C-4 is, right now, we do events through Ann Arbor Arms where we have, you know, the members can use that venue sponsored by us. We want to be able to provide that opportunity for people that aren't part of Ann Arbor Arms to rent it as a venue for, you know, receptions and corporate events and things like that. Because they've expressed interest in that. And so that's the condition, you know, that's the conditional rezoning in the process. So all the rules, driving under the influence, all those things still apply, you know, going forward for, you know, people that would be participating in that. And we'll have all the appropriate signs, you know, be careful about drinking and, you know, don't drink, all, you know, those are simple things to do that reinforce that message.
Is there a legal limit to the amount of alcohol you can have while in possession of a firearm?
All right, well, you, you should not, I mean, if, I mean, if you're on your own property, you know, that's a different situation. But, you know, in our place, it's zero tolerance.
The law is that you cannot be under the influence.
So it's zero tolerance for firearms? As opposed to driving a car? Zero point eight, if I'm not mistaken.
You can, you can, there is no law saying you can't drink alcohol. Just that your amount can't be more than point zero eight.
Or blood alcohol.
Blood alcohol.
It's my understanding that you do not hold a liquor license and you would be renting the space out to folks who would cater with places.
And they would hold a liquor license, that's correct.
So they would be required to monitor for excessive consumption or they could lose their license. It's not these guys. But we are requiring that an establishment, whether it's in, you know, in-place establishment or a contract, would be responsible for that activity. Just like any bar.
A follow-up question. When you talk about a full-time pavilion manager, that would be an Ann Arbor Arms employee?
That's right. So, but working for the pavilion, the business unit, that's correct.
Any other?
I also was not here in the last July meeting, so.
That's good, oh, good.
For me also, so I have several questions and I apologize if they have already answered them at the last meeting. Some of them already answered, I think they were a really good discussion. So just for clarification, this is open to the public, the pavilion. It's not just for members of Ann Arbor Arms.
Today is just members. And, and part of the rezoning is so that we can actually make it open to the public. So, so a non-Anne Arbor Arms person could want, you know, a company could say, I want to rent your pavilion for, to hold an office party, as an example.
This is an outdoor pavilion, so is this going to be just during the summer months? The fall months or?
I mean, for the, you know, when the weather permits, it's correct.
I only bring this up because I found it interesting with, since pickleball is adjacent to this, I don't know if you've stood next to a pickleball court or near it. I don't think a wedding reception or events are really going to, it's, I think it was just in the newspaper that the neighbors were in opposition to an expansion of a pickleball courts because of the constant noise. So keep that in mind, that's just kind of a side part there that it's, it's a constant noise factor, I think, with.
Oh, yeah, and, and, yeah, I mean, that's actually a fair point. So if, if you look at the pickleball facility, the restaurant and the bar is adjacent to entertainment pavilion. And then the courts, they have the indoor courts. And then their outdoor courts, I think, are on the other side as well. So it's not right up against the vent.
Or maybe a little bit of a sound barrier then?
Yeah, sort of a built-in sound barrier.
Okay.
Like events going on. Right.
So and then, is this something we discussed now as far as hours of operation?
That's the next step.
For the conditional, okay. Comes to, and we, so we, and we don't know how many attendees may, or how big these events may be. That's something that may be brought up in the future then, okay.
And then just because of the size of the venue, I mean, what, you know, in the space, I mean, we, you know, we've done some analysis around, you know, the bodies. I mean, there is a built-in limit. I mean, you can't have a thousand people there, you know, at an event. So, I mean, we'll, you know, we have, you know, looked at it and, you know, I don't know what the exact number is, but, you know, it's, it fits within that space because of there's the, kind of the solid ground part which has paper stones. And then there's a little grassy knoll area. So it does limit, you know, built-in limit in terms of, you know, how many particip, you know, people could actually be there. So if somebody wanted to hold a huge event with five or 600 people, that's not the place that you would do it.
So thoughts, I think Commissioner Moore, you've already said that that's not something you want with support or I, I'm trying to get an idea so we can figure out.
I've grown up with alcohol in my life, adults. Um, me and my little grandmother used to like to have an after-dinner drink or two. So it's not, I'm not against alcohol either. I just, it doesn't, it, it, it's not persuasive to me that there are bars down the road or a store that sells alcohol and that I need to have one more arms business having events with alcohol. So, I mean, I don't feel the need to pile on. I mean, it sounds like you spent some time really trying to address some of the concerns that came up in our initial meeting, and I appreciate that. I just have not, I mean, usually, it's not the people that are responsible gun owners that we have to worry about. It's the one person that's going to come in or one person that's going to break a rule or whatever, or one person that's mad for the night or whatever. And so I'm just really concerned about it and, um, I can't, as a commissioner of the title township, I can't really prove it because I would have some safety concerns. And that's really what it falls down to.
Commissioner Hi.
Along those lines, Commissioner Moore, if I, if I were to put it this way to you, I'm looking.
Can you speak up just a little bit? Yeah.
Sorry. If I were to view that, I'm viewing this as an outdoor facility that is really a restaurant slash event space that could be catering alcohol. And it has nothing to do with the fact that there's a gun club right next door, it's separate from it. And, but it is connected in the way that allows for monitoring of the flow of people from that event into their facility where guns are allowed to be used. Now, I know we've heard some concerns that guns could be brought to the event space, but they could be brought to a bar too. And you need, or they could be in the party line. And there are rules and there are laws that govern how we, how much monitoring that requires. But, but to add the fact that it's right in the, in the same property line as the gun facility could allow them to walk into that too. They are saying they're going, they have to monitor for alcohol consumption of any buyers that come in. And that they're going to put a full-time monitor in place to try to make sure people understand the rules and what's going to be monitored of them. That's above and beyond what would happen at a bar. They aren't really going to be checking for firearms at a bar, are they? Somebody could have a, I don't know. People need to go by the law, but they don't always, it's your point. But in this space, they are at least required by law to be checking for firearms and alcohol simultaneously. I don't know if that addresses your concern at all. But it does seem to be an additional barrier to bringing firearms, to getting in possession of firearms with alcohol.
It could be. Yeah, I, I think what you're saying is because of the, um, the regulations, the federal regulations, ATF regulations, this particular event space has more.
Control.
Control than a typical, any other event space that wouldn't even be looking for.
But the only control that I see viable in the moment that somebody does something against the rules is the fact that there are staff on site that have guns.
There is that.
Because that's what we're talking about in the moment that somebody decides not to play by the rules. It's not how many policies or how many audits the ATF gives and all of that. I think those are all good things, and I don't mean to minimize them. But I do view that as a positive because in the moment, you don't hand out the monitor paper, you pull your gun and stop the violence. Um, but I get all that, I understand the reasoning, Commissioner Hi. I understand the reasoning, Commissioner Kovitzin. I really do understand the point you're making and the point that Mr. Rose, the points that Mr. Rose has made tonight. I just don't think it's good public policy to mix guns and alcohol despite the fact that the pavilion is behind the gun, the gun facility. I don't know how, I think there's. Maybe, I think there's a difference in that it's a place that invites people to bring their guns. It's a place that sells guns, has guns on. And so it ups the ante in some way for me, unlike a restaurant or a theater or elementary school or whatever. We're talking about a facility, a business that promotes guns, sells guns, and allow people to bring their guns on-site. I get where the pavilion is, but to me, that ups the ante with regard to safety. And I can stop, you know, something like.
That's a good point. Thoughts?
Is, is there something that we could trigger where we would get? Maybe the reports from the ATF to see if there have been any incidents, to see if they are in violation of the conditional rezoning? Is that something where even?
I think that.
Out of bounds with that, asking something like that?
I, I think with the.
Asking next, the next round with the conditional use, I think we could.
So we, we could ask for, you know, if there's, you know, get the reports from the ATF to see have there been any violations as part of the.
I don't think you're going to get them from the ATF. I mean, that's, first of all, it's private. I don't think, I think that, I'd be very surprised if you could get your hands on that stuff.
I mean, the ATF regulations are pretty, you know, pretty documented and open to the public. And there are many ranges actually in Michigan that have bars inside the range. So we're not even, we're not even, we're not proposing that. That's why we have this outdoor venue that's a lot easier to monitor than, you know, if we had a bar inside the facility. And a lot of those facilities where you actually have to check, you know, check your gun, you know, before you can go into the bar. And then once you've been in the bar, you know, you're, you're, you're prohibited from going back into the range area. But we're not proposing that we have a bar in Ann Arbor Arms. That's why we have this outdoor facility. It's not even, it's the facility, it's a venue, it's not, there's no bar there.
The conditional use actually allows you to have alcohol inside. It would have to be the conditional use that would.
You should rezon.
The conditional rezon, thank you. Rezoning allow, would allow you to have a bar in there. It would be the conditional use that would restrict having a bar inside. So I think that with the conditional, if, if we have, we, we recommend approval of the. the, um, conditional zoning, I think there are some things that need to get addressed in, in the next phase around the, the use.
I would certainly like to see, uh, data on what you just said about there are gun ranges that have bars inside.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, sure, we can do that, as you say.
Others? Commissioner Human, do you have, what are your thoughts?
I'm strongly, I'm pretty strongly opposed to allowing that, to mix guns and alcohol. As Commissioner Moore was pointing out, I definitely, definitely agree with you on that, Commissioner Moore. So I think that, I have no doubt that Ann Arbor Arms is a very responsible organization, that its members are very responsible. However, I think that mixing those two together is bound to, it opens the door for accidents, I think. I think it increases the chances of an accident, how about that? Um, there's always time for, always a chance for an accident with alcohol, there's always a chance for an accident with a gun, but mixing the two together just seems to be, uh, even worse.
Well, if I may make a comment to that.
Yeah, I guess, if, if you can, you know, I, um, okay, that's fine. And I, I just wanna get through Commissioners', you know, kind of thinking here. Commissioner Chang, what's your?
Well, I actually see everyone's point of view at the table. You know, I, I, I probably, I'm going to support it, but the only reason I'm probably leading in that way is because I know that when it comes back, we can put restrictions on this. And that's the doubles in the details. I may not, oh, yes, or maybe not, no, depending on what the restrictions are at that point. You know, that's what it's gonna come down to. And that's why I was kind of probing about what type of enforcement would we do? Can we revoke the conditional rezoning? You know, if we had ATF reports that were, oh, they've had several violations, then that's where I would stand, is that it's a no-go. You know, if we can do that type of enforcement, but I don't know if I have the answers to that at this point, or we need more information when they come back.
There, there are provisions to, there are provisions to, um, revert, revert, revert a conditional zoning if they cannot meet the conditions they've placed upon themselves. But they haven't placed any qualitative conditions upon themselves. The only thing they're conditioning this is on limiting the types of uses. So, you're the next one.
It would be the next step that you'd have, that you could call bad use.
But I, I don't know if this is a legal question or not, is, could we ask them, you know, if, if it were approved? Well, you've had two violations from the ATF within a year. Can we, at that point, deny the conditional zoning or do enforcement? I don't know.
It would be the conditional use.
The conditional use, exactly.
From it would be.
Sorry, unfortunate similarity in terms, but, uh, the conditional use is the next step, and, yes, you can revoke a conditional use.
Okay, so we would have that authority if they're, if they would agree to the stipulations, Mr. Rose would agree to this stipulation, that we would put, uh, the conditional use?
They don't have to agree with it.
Exactly.
But not the rezoning.
We don't have to approve it.
Not the rezoning, only the conditional use can revoke that, but not the rezoning.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so I have a question. So the conditional rezoning allows them to have a restaurant serving alcohol in Ann Arbor Arms?
Rezoning guns.
The rezoning guns.
On, like, within the outlines of the property that...
Right. So, you know, that, the, if that's a conditional, actually, that's a conditional use, right? It's a conditional use.
Yeah, it's a conditional use, standard restaurant establishments that serve alcohol, that's one of the conditional uses of the property.
So part of the, then, the conditional use would be the discussion of where that alcohol could be served and under what circumstances? Both indoors and at?
Yeah, if all they were proposing was pavilion, that's awkward, that's, they could not do it indoors. The, the, the conditional use would not transfer to the indoor space, because that part's not a really, that's not even really, it's just that upper part. So they couldn't all of a sudden have a restaurant serving alcohol inside Ann Arbor Arms.
If the condition, if the conditions that were placed on the use restricted it to outdoor.
Well, I mean, that, you would be safer doing it that way, but even if you didn't make that condition, changing Ann Arbor Arms to having a bar inside would be a significant change in use, which is simply not, we found out about that, so. Even, you know, so.
Because serving alcohol is still the conditional use, so the conditional use would be, okay. Because they didn't get a conditional use for a restaurant. They, they're getting, they're gonna get a conditional use for the pavilion.
If we spell it out in the next phase.
Yes.
Okay.
So I...
Is that going to need with approval?
That's correct, I mean, that's...
I'm having a hard time hearing some of you. Mr. Juan, it's, you're a little quiet. It's hard to hear you back there, so.
Me too, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and you have a little bit of a hard time.
So the conditional use is for the pavilion?
Yeah.
Change.
I think, yeah, that helps, I think, and so...
It will be for the...
Will be.
Will be. At this point, we just, I can, travel, so.
So I think, I, I think I agree with Commissioner Chang in that, um, I, I think it is, I, I don't have an issue approving the, or recommending approval of the rezoning, the conditional rezoning. It's really gonna come down to, um, those conditional uses and making sure that, um, you know, that the township has some enforcement as well as, and, and what way of, um, checking things, and that we feel that there are, um, good protocols in place, um, in, in my mind. So it's, like you said, it's the details of, of that, um, use. So that's kind of, I think, where I'm landing. Commissioner Hyde, how about you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with that. I, I realize that what we have before us, if approved, would, um, allow a request for a restaurant with, inside the facilities, but that, it doesn't approve that in this phase, it just, that's a potential. So it will be in the next step that we would actually nail down all the details. And I think I could be correct in this. I would like to see some more data, as you pointed out, if, if operations around the state already have gun ranges with, with bars, serving alcohol, I'd like to know, I really would like to have some data on that and to know how enforcement of, of safety is done in those facilities. I mean, is it safe? I'm assuming it is, because we don't hear about accidents or maliciousness.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Excuse me, that, I, this is, I'm a general manager, I just wanted to address that. I think we can do that in the next round. Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see that we discuss that in the next round, is what I'm saying.
Yes, yeah. I'm assuming, so we, I definitely have information about that for you.
Excellent, because that would be a concern to address in the next stage. I just didn't want you to be surprised that we were gonna be asked.
And, and, yeah, okay, I think let's, um, then, I'm uncomfortable with asking for someone to, um, make a motion. Do you want to take that on, Commissioner Hyde?
I would. So, for ordinance amendment twenty-two zero-zero-four Ann Arbor Arms for conditional rezoning from I-1 Limited Industrial to C-4 Composite Commercial. Based on the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds the ordered amendment twenty-two zero-zero-four Ann Arbor Arms for conditional rezoning from I-1 Limited Industrial to C-4 Composite Commercial rezoning request received by the township meets the informational requirements of section thirty-six four sixty-one and the factors found in section thirty-six four sixty-two of the zoning ordinance. And the next part doesn't apply, does it then?
It does.
And the conditional rezoning factors found in section thirty-six four sixty-three and recommends approval with conditions presented by the applicant limiting possible uses of the property. And with Carla Warman's letter of July fifth, I believe it is, twenty-twenty-two? And I'd also like to suggest, but would like to hear whether we should include the, maintaining of a full-time pavilion manager to monitor the event pavilion participants and all the other items the applicant has agreed to in their narrative, but that could also be in the next phase.
I think it's more appropriate in the next phase.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave it with Carla Warman's letter and the conditions the applicant put on themselves.
Once it's twenty-two.
July fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
And, yeah, we should say the voluntary conditions, because it's voluntary at this stage.
Well, it's with the conditions presented by the applicant.
Right, okay.
I don't care if we coerced, but we're not, but we did, but yes.
Okay.
That would be a good word.
All right. Is there a second for the motion?
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Okay. Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Human?
No.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Colverson?
Yes.
You too.
Did we just need a simple majority?
Right.
Or majority?
So, okay, and that is a recommendation, so it does go to the, um, Board of Trustees. So, thank you. Right. Okay, so, um, next, um, we have, um, our, we've been talking about the PD language. And... I want to do, um, can you hold on? Yeah, you can grab, so you get which page you see, uh, reload? Yeah, you want to put special? Okay, a five-minute?
Five-minute break, is that what?
Yeah, okay, we'll do a five-minute break. Yeah, okay, we'll do a five-minute break.
Recording stopped.
Meet the zoning requirements and the and the number of units that they would be allowed to build. And we're calling that a parallel plan so that we can then see what they're asking for in terms of bonuses based on what they're meeting in the PUD requirements.
The underlying zoning.
What is, what are the restrictions on this parallel plan? That can they, they have to put in roads, so they have to subtract area for roads to get to the houses.
Can I just insert, that's something that the public brought up is that these parallel plans are not, we don't require much rigor.
And I think in what the intent is, is Doug's coming up with a calculation rather than the reliance on the parallel plan. And
Wait, say that again.
He's, he's going to come up with a, he's working on a calculation in lieu of the parallel plan. So it would just be a calculation. And if the density bonuses are not outside the water sewer district, then there, there would be no need for a parallel plan because you're not getting a density bonus.
If we're going to do it by calculation, then we ought to state that in the ordinance.
Right, and it would be.
And the calculation would come out to be exactly what the underlying zoning allowed if it's, if it's, if they don't get the bonuses, if they don't meet the requirements for the bonuses, it'll come out to exactly what.
Well, would it be the underlying zoning or the master plan? Because the PUD.
That's the problem.
If it would be one or the other, according to the ordinance.
But correct me if I'm wrong, because of the master plan saying in the zoning ordinance, there's an option to use either.
They get to choose.
Correct.
Whichever is the most beneficial for them.
And, and the master plan is typically a range.
We need to fix that.
It isn't.
This should not be, they should, they should jive better.
Well, that means that we should redo the zoning based on the master.
Yeah, well, it puts a lot, a lot of stuff there.
Yeah.
Forget the S I one thing. Parallel plan, we're going to go with the calculation. I know we talked about that, I forgot. And, and we will make the PUD language refer to that calculation for density bonus.
Yeah, now, as I rewrite this, I will also provide the calculation. And we can discuss that.
Right, you're going to have to go over it to make sure we all agree on.
If you don't, then we'll just go back to a density plan. But to the point of, the point of the density plan was required. Yeah, I would, I would agree that there's not as much, I think Commissioner Morris said rigor, that maybe we should have maybe some of the public raise. So it said that the calculations for the density of the site, including the possibility of density bonus, that can shall be required to submit a conventional, non-open space layout. Using the underlying zoning classification as applicable township regulations demonstrating a practical project for the subject parcel. So I mean, it says you have to provide a conventional layout that's practical. So yeah, maybe we should be a little more specific than that.
Yeah, and well, you don't need to say it at all, you can say let's perform this calculation, or however you put it, and give, you know, give all the factors. And I'm assuming that it's going to have streets, and because you've talked about that, it's going to have wetlands, open space, I mean, we're going to require a certain amount of open space, aren't we?
Yeah, well, you would, you would, so for a standard straight development, they don't necessarily require open space. So if you're just trying to determine the base density, you're trying to figure, you know, we are trying to be fair with someone who has these property that says, okay, if you were to develop this property conventional, you would get thirty units. Well, they have to, you know, as, as it currently stands, a developer would have to try to prove to us they could get thirty units. And they would do that through a parallel, what we call a parallel plan, or a conventional plan. That, so if it was one acre lots, they'd have to show a layout that showed road, you know, roads, stormwater detention, lots, how, how it would lay out in a reasonable way that they, in theory, if the PUD was denied, they could actually build. Now, usually that's a pretty nasty plan to be on.
They're building it out in the grid.
Usually it's one, usually it's an attractive plan, but usually it's a plan that you don't want, that the community doesn't want. Because it's, it's development from east to west, north to south, every inch taken by lots and houses, and.
That's where the clustering comes in.
Yeah, and then the clustering might say, okay, you can get thirty lots without a bonus. That's why we still need, that's why we still need a parallel plan or some form of calculation, because even if they're not getting it.
Right, they still need that. And, but I don't think, I think the PUD should probably have the same, and maybe it's not a density, because you still have the open, what is it, the open space option, right?
Yeah.
And that provides a small, you have to have fifty percent, is it fifty percent open space? Because I think the PUD should at least reflect that, but no more. So all you're doing is giving the, yeah.
Yeah, giving the clustering an open space.
Right, and if you have the flexibility, and the only reason to go to a PUD at that point for a developer would be if there's something odd.
If there's some oddities to the site.
Most, most developers would go with an open space plan.
Maybe hill, it's going to cause problems.
Or like the gravel quarry, you know, something like that, where you, you really have.
Drain difficulties.
Yeah.
And frankly, if, so I'm thinking, I was thinking about this, and so to your point about if, if there's really no density bonus, there's probably not a reason, if in some cases, to even pursue a PUD. Because a PUD is much more difficult to, to have approved. So developer would probably just propose an open space development. And so if we take the density bonus off the table in residential districts, we're probably not going to see a lot of PUDs. Unless it's something totally different, some, some odd circumstance, or some, some situation, mixed use or something like that.
You just said a phrase that I, or term that I don't understand, in open space development, what is that?
Is it open spaces?
So there's a, man, it's a good question, and you should understand this, because there are, there's a requirement in state law that all cities, villages, and townships, if you have residentially zoned property, you have to allow for an open space option. And that was intended to curb what I described as the ugly density plan. So imagine twenty, no, imagine thirty, thirty-five years ago, subdivisions, if you had, these options weren't available for, in most cases. So most subdivisions, if you have one acre zoning, you got one acre lots. If you have two and a half acre zoning, you have two and a half acre lots, end of story. To try to curb property being completely fragmented with lots, leave a hundred acre parcel, to try to prevent a hundred acre parcels from being completely filled with lots, hundred, say one acre zoning, let's say you get a hundred lots, you can't, let's just say you can't. So instead of getting a hundred lots on a hundred acre parcel, the law was changed in about two thousand four or thereabouts, that required communities to, we have to, it's not that we, it's not an option. Every community has to have an open space provision. Some people call it clustered housing, this is not a PUD, this is a whole separate thing. And open space zoning allows for the same number of houses, kind of what we're talking about here. Same number of homes you could get normally, but you have to preserve fifty percent of the site in open space. So you have to maintain fifty percent of the home, fifty percent of the property in dedicated open space that can't ever change from open space. So that was a way that the state legislature years ago came up with to help prevent just the complete fragmentation of properties so that there's no open space or views or vistas or.
And so lot sizes are smaller.
Yes, a lot sizes can be, you can stay in our.
So you can get a hundred units, but they would be smaller.
Yeah, it might be on half acre lots instead of one acre.
Long as you have, let's say it's six acres, three acres has to be open space.
Yeah, and we had that provision in our zoning ordinance.
Where, where is, is called open space?
Yeah, called open space provisioners.
Okay, oh, the open.
Yeah, yeah, it's in our, it's in our current ordinance, and it's a special land use in all the districts, so it requires public hearing to do. But it's, it's, you know, it's in the ordinance. Now, the PUD ordinance currently only requires thirty percent open space. So we might want to change that, but there is a look at it. Or, or it's maybe another reason why someone would pursue a PUD, maybe would pursue a PUD, because they're going to have to say.
Right.
So.
And our statute of law, I mean, sorry, twenty-five years of saying statute, I'm sorry, our ordinance allows for that.
Yes, currently allows thirty percent open space from PUD. But just the open space provisions, which don't allow a density bonus, allow, require a fifty percent open space.
However, then the PUD requires the public benefit.
So that's, it requires a public benefit, all at the option of the developer.
No, no, we don't have to approve it.
We don't have to, that's true, we don't have to.
We don't.
But that's true, the developer proposes it, and you can say no or yes, whatever you think.
But we can't impose on the developer.
Yeah, we can request, and if they don't agree, we can.
PUD is one of those cases that you can actually request reasonable conditions based on ordinance provisions.
They don't have to accept it.
In the way, so for instance, the fact that, I want to hone in on this, but this seems an easy example. We've been talking a lot about affordable housing. Affordable housing is listed in our PUD ordinance as one of the community benefits that they can choose.
It's proposed.
It's proposed to me.
Yeah, that, that they can choose from. So I, I think it's fair to say that most developers are not interested in that. Unless you're interested in the industry of affordable housing.
Make it affordable.
Well, it, one of the things, one of the things that I think, this is an opportune time, because if we can align some of our PUD, or with the Inflation Reduction Act, there are some really key, if, if we align the wording, like it, the DOs, there are a couple of bonuses for developers, that if they meet the DOE Net Zero Ready, and Energy Star, something certification zone. If we align some of our criteria with that, then it, then there's also these financial pieces that come in. And if they do the affordable housing, there are bonuses even from this, this Inflation Reduction Act. So what I'm thinking is, I want to hurry this along a little bit to be able to.
The bonuses, so we're talking about density bonuses.
Right, so we give them a density bonus, and they get some, they can, they can get some funds to make them better than the code from a sustainable, from an energy standpoint, ready for solar. And if they do the affordable housing piece, there's even another slice of money that comes. So what it does is it sort of compounds the benefits for sustainable and affordable housing.
So we started out this conversation about these three identified lazy Hammond's provision. One is deleted like it is, unlimited residential, anywhere, anytime, in the township. That's the way it is today for residential. And then number three is the opposite of that in terms of restraint. Only PUDs in the service.
Number two is.
Right, number two is.
PUDs outside, oh, okay, number two is that. And then the other, number three is the restrictive density bonuses.
Yeah, right.
So I would be in favor, and I've said this before, so I'm going to keep it short. But I don't know if you've heard my diatribe, Chris and Jeff. I'm concerned about the large projects, what I consider large projects, that we, that have come to us recently. Heritage, slum, et cetera. And what, that, that one development or two developments or whatever create more and more urbanization. Because you're getting more traffic, you're going to create, you know, wide roads, and we start to lose our rural nature of our community. And so I would, I would be in favor of restricting PUDs to the sewer service area. If not, I'd be in favor of taking away bonus, density bonuses.
Outside of that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Outside of the service center area. And I just, our master plan is replete with talking about the rural nature of our community. And yet, what we're doing is we're, we, what we've done, policy wise, in changing our master plan, we've created the ability to build more, okay? And so I'm concerned about what we've already done, and that's why these discussions have come up, you know? And it's kind of, I guess, aligned with, you know, what is the, what is the view? Like I say, there's a lot of glowing language about the view of the rural character of our township. But we're, so we're talking out of both sides of our mouth in some ways, I feel like. Not a negative connotation, so that's where I'm at in this.
No, I, I'm.
I'm with you.
I'm with you. And, and I think, I think there isn't that big of a difference between two and three. Because I think what will happen with three is there isn't any reason to do a PUD unless it's a really weird, non-conforming, there isn't a way to do an open space plan. I, I really don't think there'd be any kind of motivation to, to do a PUD. Because you're going to get hit up for a public benefit, and, you know, and you might not have, maybe.
Any bonus, any density bonus.
You're not getting any density bonus.
And you're looking at a time difference, you're looking at a time difference of a, a year for a PUD, and PUDs take a long time. Like you say, it's less than that, but really you're looking at about, almost a year from start to finish for a PUD. And you're looking at four sets of months for, for open space condition to be extracted.
And if there's no difference in the number of units that you can put on there, it won't affect the neighborhood that, any differently. So I, I think that not allowing the density bonus will have the effect of keeping it rural. But give them the flexibility of clustering.
Through the open space.
Well.
Yeah, or the PUD if they wanted.
Could you do both? Could you say, I want to build a PUD?
With an open space plan?
Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, that's exactly what I wanted.
There's some communities that use their PUD ordinance as their open space. We have two different, we have an open space regulation, that's a special land use approval, and the PUD regulations are rezoning. But the PUD is a lot more than just a potential open space project. And PUD can be a mixed use project, it could be residential, commercial, it could be a whole variety of, you know, PUD, PUD is like the ultimate flexibility in your open space.
I have two questions now, but I'll go to the second one I came across, which is, if we don't think that people would build PUDs outside of the sewer district with the new language, then why would we allow for that anyway? Why wouldn't we just restrict it down to the, to the sewer district? And I guess I'll ask my first question, tacked onto that, is what benefit is there for allowing PUD outside of the sewer district? Is there any benefit to doing that?
Yeah, I mean, there, there are certain circumstances, very odd circumstances that come up. Where a PUD outside of the sewer service district can address non-conforming situations. It can address, you know, a very odd shaped parcel, it's like, the one I noticed last, or I knew of last time was the, there's a development that's just west of Lock Albion called the Preserve. That was built on an old gravel pit, and that, there were issues.
Rayages.
There was issues with that site and the redevelopment of that site that likely could not have been addressed in just a straight, you know, straight. And so they needed a PUD, but they have sewer water now, they don't have sewer water. But it's all well and septic, but they, that, so there are, there are odd commissions that will come up occasionally, that would be helpful to have, in my opinion. Be helpful to have the ability to allow a PUD outside sewer service district. This will strictly, you know, this, if you adopted provisions similar to number three in our memo, it, it would address a lot of this concern that, you know, that I hear from planning commission as well as the public about why are we allowing a density bonus? And, you know, why do we allow density bonuses? Because we're supposed to be getting something in that scenario. Now, we'd still be allowing density bonuses under this proposal in the sewer service district. So you can still get some initial density, which essentially is the Jackstar corridor. But if we do not allow that outside of the Jackstar corridor, you would have to follow the master plan and order the same, aligns with the district.
Would that gravel example, that gravel lot, gravel pit example that you gave earlier, would it be able to have been built with condition, with, with the third option? Without the density bonus?
Did they have a density bonus?
I never recall that.
It wasn't around.
Well, I think that property was owned extractive when they went at it, so there was a lot of weird stuff going on with that property, so.
I was shocked when it got developed, I mean, I wasn't, I was just an engineer at the time, I wasn't involved in it. But I, I noticed it, I went, how can they do that?
I want to say that, owned extractive, or had, there, there's a lot of odd circumstances that it helped, that that was a PUD. Now, does that come up all the time? No, it does not come up all the time.
Without a PUD though, there'd be no remedy to that kind of situation?
My, in my recollection, yes, I'd have to pull the file, look at all the particulars, but it was not sufficient.
The Fox Preserve property that's along Peters, that one, they only built along the ridge. And they left it alone, and it became a preserve. Is it a county, is it a county preserve, or is it?
Might be both.
Maybe ours too?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, that's an alternative to an old gravel pit, is that it becomes unusable for development, and you end up with an interesting preserve that you can pave through. Sometimes failures to develop is not a bad.
Then you have a speaking difference.
Yeah, there you go.
So I guess, yeah, what it would do is it basically, it, it's a, it's a fail safe, I guess, for a, a piece of property that has no other option.
Let me mention whether it is, and I, I think some, one of the members of the public questioned me on it. And I, I have a mark, that I, you have two maps, you should have two maps in front of me, and one is just a highlighted map that I highlighted all PUDs. I remember a PUD that went through the process, maybe even a little before my time, but went through the process because there were multiple homes that were built on a single piece of property. And that was done years and years ago. Well, that's a problem, you can't, one, we don't allow multiple homes on a single piece of property. And then it becomes a problem for mortgaging and all kinds of stuff. And so that, that one is located on Peters Road, it's in section ten, that I gave you guys. On the west edge of section ten, between, literally between section ten and section nine, oh, between Z and Peters Road, which is before they connect, there's a little PUD there. That's the PUD, that's the one I was talking about a few months ago, where this odd, non-conforming, these old, non-conforming houses that were probably built in you know, the fifties or turn, who knows when. But we, we were able to really adjust some latlines to put each of the homes on a separate lot and, and make it work for them, and then, you know, so anyway, so there, there are these odd situations, and that's one of them. If you look in the.
So they do, too.
Yeah, if you look in the intent, I think it's the intent or the purpose of the PUD section, it talks about addressing non-conforming. But it gives the township an ability to address an odd, non-conforming situation. That little piece right there is the one that I erased, that someone questioned me about, and I wanted to find it, that's the piece. So, you know, it, it, does, does that come up very often? No, it doesn't come up very often. But when it does come up, it's nice to have a tool to be able to address it.
Can we change the language of number three, option three, or add a fourth option? That would be something like, no PUDs outside of the sewer district except for non-conforming properties, or whatever the language might be? Because it sounds like we're trying to address just these non-conforming situations and not really allow PUDs beyond that, outside of the sewer district. But we're not really capturing that with option three.
It'd be hard to define, but you can get it right. Without having something in mind, how do you write an exception?
Yeah, I think the, but the, by, there's really, it would be the only option you have with your property, basically. But you would still have the PUD. No, you, you wouldn't choose that, you'd choose an open space to get a density bonus and protect the wetlands and stuff, and not have to go through the whole PUD thing. So it's sort of a last resort if you're, if you can't, if you're having difficulty making it work under an open space kind of thing. And it wouldn't be for any other use other than residential in those areas. So it's, I, I hate to say just non-conforming, because as soon as you do that, something else is going to, you know, something else could come up. And so this is, it's open enough that there is sort of like that fail safe, that you're not really saying you can't do anything with your land because it, it, you, you know, the options are so limited. So I guess that's the way I, that's the way I see it.
I mean, on that topic though, I think that we've heard lots of citizens, residents, I should say, express concern about, you know, development, overdevelopment, or, or whatever, you know, not a big fan of the growth that's happening. Honestly, I don't really share those concerns, particularly in the area close to Ann Arbor. However, you know, the rural parts of, of this area are really nice, and I just, I don't agree that it's a shame that somebody can't do more with it, so.
Well, sometimes if, in the case of the multiple buildings on a lot or something like that, you go, yeah, you just.
Right, with the open.
Out of luck.
Right, with the open, open plan, I mean, that is what it is, we, we can't do anything about that. Does, I mean, nothing about this makes, would make somebody who was going to develop an open, open space plan not choose open space plan, right?
Right.
So. Yeah, I still, I think that, I, I, I'm still convinced that restricting development to just the sewer district is, is the right option. But I'm, with Commissioner Moore, I mean, you know, any sort of restriction to focus development inside the sewer district is better than not, which is where we currently are.
Yeah.
If we have a PUD that's outside of the water and sewer district, would we, each individual unit wouldn't have the ability to have their own septic system? So are we almost, I'm, I'm asking a question, but I'm stating it as, as facts, pardon me. So would we almost be requiring a community sewer system? I mean, uh,
It would be, if the community wastewater, it, it depends how small the, I mean, the preserve has their own septic, well, septic. They don't have a community one, and that's.
Oh, they all have their own.
Yeah, yeah, yes. It would depend, it would depend on.
How they cluster.
The, the size of lots.
I mean, there's a rule of thumb that's not written anywhere, but general rule of thumb is one acre is about, actually, the rule of thumb is a third, third of an acre per acre on a septic.
Yep.
You're not gonna see that written anywhere, but that's kind of.
Right.
Third of an acre.
Per bedroom on a septic.
It just gives you the number of flushes per day you're gonna accept.
Three bedroom home, three bedroom home would be fine. Three hundred and twenty or more. Now, are there exceptions to that? Yes, of course there's exceptions to that.
But you get more, you get much more compact than that and you stop being able to arrange the distances required between units, between water and sewer.
But you have to remember in our ag district, the minimum lot size is two and a half acres.
Right.
So that would, it would be a substantial open space preservation if they even went down to an acre lot instead of the two and a half.
You're right.
Two, big two and a half acre lots to shrinking them down to an acre, saving an acre and a half for every lot that would be put open space.
So could we, would we even want, could we put restrictions on the, uh, even requests for community, uh, water treatment?
I don't think we can do that.
Okay. Cause I know that they, it's been proposed a number of times, but.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have.
We have an ordinance that allows for them.
What, what the parameters are around it. And then the state also has theirs.
Yeah, I think that was the subject of that lawsuit. Um, I forget the community, some community out Westside State that up until that lawsuit, townships could just act out and say, no, we don't, we don't, we will not approve, you know, the state would ask if the township. Yeah. And, and, but that changed. And it's a, it's a landmark case in Michigan where then all these communities then have to scramble and try to come to their ordinances to allow these things to happen.
Yeah.
You said you came up with it here.
We came up with it, yeah, before the county or actually the state.
However, without the density bonus, unless you have, there really isn't, right? Because you, I mean, you have to, I mean, all of the hoops you'd have to jump through to do that. And you're not, yeah, I, I, I think it's.
It's a costly item to bring in that kind of facility.
Yeah, right.
But it's also costly to do, you know, one septic system per house.
Way, way.
Way less.
Because of the ongoing, I mean, you have to, you have to, I mean, there's a whole bond thing set up and there's, I mean, there's, yeah, it's a big, yes.
And you know, there's, there's, yeah, the theory behind the open space development is both a benefit for the community because you get fifty percent open space. It's also a benefit for a developer because you, there's less infrastructure. There's less road length. There's less stormwater detention required. And so developers will normally, if the conditions are good, developers will migrate towards an open space project because it's gonna cost them less to get the same amount of lots. And then it also provides fifty percent open space. So, um, it's, you know, I've worked in many communities, including the township, that have very successfully employed a cluster or open space provision. So.
Doug, could you tell me what's that best practice again? One third, four and a half?
A third, sort of an acre.
Rule of thumb. It isn't, yeah, it is a next time practice.
One third of what?
One third of an acre per bedroom. And that's really a doublе one, some rule of thumb. Yeah.
It's not a best practice. It's a, how do you, how do I estimate if, yeah.
You see a goal into a three bedroom, as Doug said, on a one acre lot, which is about the typical. Are there exceptions of the noun?
Yes.
Yeah.
Depending on soil conditions.
It's just because of the distance between the septic system here.
Absolutely.
The well here.
The well has to be, yeah, a thousand feet away.
And you wanna, you wanna make sure you have the trees and all the, you know, there are a lot of things that you don't want, you know, to deal with that on. Have to remove trees to put in a septic. Yeah. Right. Anyway, um, so it sounds like everybody's around two or three and then it's just a matter of, um.
Actually, I heard, I, I think I heard three or four.
Two or three or four.
Four.
Or the, the.
Four was just trying to come up with language that allowed the exceptions. Um, and.
Oh.
But, but to allow it, but not get the density bonus, um, takes away the, the advantage to going that route. So it, only the exceptions would apply really. Wouldn't even try to come up with an application.
Someone that needed it.
Somebody that needed it. Only the exceptional cases.
When there wasn't another path.
Without us trying to define what those exceptional cases would be, which, you know, those could be hard to define. All of them.
I need to kind of put a wrench in it, but I was leaning towards number one, so.
Keeping it the way it is?
The way it is. Uh, you know, I'm looking at the map and I see, you know, there's several that are clearly outside of the, the district that I've, and, and, I mean, ultimately it comes down to planning commission, the trustees who are willing to approve the PUD. So we still have all of the control, you know, whether it's us or the trustees, whether we're going to accept the public benefits or not. So, I mean, looking at some of these, I, I don't know the history of all of the, the PUDs outside of the district, but have they been so controversial that come along that, that we had neighbors that were really opposed to the PUDs outside of the district?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. That's kind of relative.
Exactly. You're right. I mean.
There, there, you know, there have always been concerns generally, you know, by adjacent neighbors when a density comes in higher than they expect. Um, but terribly controversial. You know, it's, it's all part of the process and it's all relative. Yeah.
I, I think where it comes in is, is when, where it helps is we're trying to preserve, if we have a goal, and no goal has been established, but thirty percent has been kind of thrown around. And that was, I think, with the open, the, the last preservation group, they were talking about thirty percent. And to do that.
Thirty percent of.
Of, of the total land, preserve thirty percent of the total. And when you look at that, um, is there, if you have a developer who knows they can get a density bonus with a, a residential parcel, that, um, one makes it more tempting to do development as opposed to preservation. And so if you, if there's no longer, there's an open space, you know, an open space bonus, but there isn't a density bonus, then it makes land preservation a, a little, I think, easier to accomplish.
I'm just wondering if we had a formula, but of course the more density, the more open space we want. Don't make it forty-five percent if you're going to get a bonus.
We have, if you have, you get a, a bonus if you have at least sixty percent of the PUD left open space. And that's one of the.
So that's, that's substantial. Yeah. So.
Yeah, that's substantial.
Hey, can I, can I say something?
Yeah, okay.
To Commissioner Humans' comment about, you know, why someone would do a PUD. Um, occasionally people have like unique ideas and it's not always about maximum density. So if you'll notice the PUD that's in the northwest corner of Wagner and Sider Church Road, that, the reason that this project needed a PUD was that the applicant was proposing all of that, except for the part that says A1. So all of that property there was contained in the PUD for this project. That corner was all open space and is currently farmed, I believe. Um, that was part of this PUD. What they needed on this PUD, they wanted to, they wanted to put in a class C private road to access one, two, three, four, I think five, four or five parcels. And the, and the four or five parcels are found in the very northern part of that PUD if you look on the map. Because the length, because of the length of that road, they would have had to put in a class, all they wanted was four splits. And they had, they had the ownership of this whole and control of this whole property, maybe five, so I forget, I say five splits. Um, they would have had to put in a class A private road due to the length of that, to the length of that road. And class A private road is a twenty-two foot or twenty-four foot wide paved, like.
Darkened thousands.
Looks like Z Road. I mean, it's, 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 it's a major paved road. They only wanted access to four splits. And so they said, and they gave us all this open space, the corner of Wagner and Sider Church is part of the deal. So they got their six lots. They got to put in a sixteen foot wide gravel road that's basically a glorified driveway that went like almost two thousand feet or fifteen hundred feet from Wagner back to those six lots. And they, uh, you know, so that's, that's another case where a developer wasn't pumping out the maximum density, but they had an idea in their head. They wanted six lots. They wanted access down a sixteen foot wide gravel road. And, uh, and they were gonna, you know, develop this open space to township. So there are, and that would, that couldn't have happened. That, that just simply couldn't have happened without the PUD regulations.
You couldn't get a zoning variance?
No, cause it was the road required. So they, they, they could have in theory got a variance.
But one of the things that the zoning board appeal says is you made your own.
Yeah.
You, you created your own non-conformity, basically.
The zoning board appeal is not supposed to grant variance if someone creates their own property.
I see.
So if they created their own, yeah, this is a vacant piece of property. They can do, they have enough property to put a twenty-four foot paved road. That they, there's nothing physical constraining. It's, it's their own ideas that are, you're not supposed to grant a variance on someone's idea of what they want. There has to be specific practical difficulty with the property. Like a steep slope or wetland or a, a store or a tree or something that we're trying to not affect.
Okay, here's another one. You know, you're talking about different ideas.
Yes.
Okay, here's, there's, um, a, a couple groups actually. Um, they're trying to create a community for adult children with autism or adult, I should say adults with autism, learning disabilities and so forth. And it's a farm-based community with live-in, they each have their own houses and they want to have like a, a community center and maybe a little shop that they can, you know, sell some of the stuff that they make in their kitchen and grow on their farm and that kind of stuff. And so, I, I mean, maybe that could fit in under certain zoning, but it, it could cause, it could be an issue. And so an idea like that as a PUD, you know, could.
But you could have that without a PUD.
Yeah, but that, all those.
You might be a store, yeah.
Yeah, those mixing uses would almost, plus little houses. I mean, that would be virtually impossible under her system.
So, so let's say somebody had an idea like that. It's a, I mean, it's, there's, there's, there are a couple in different states and they're trying to do one, there's a group of, of, um, parents and, or that are trying to do it. And I guess there's something similar, but it's called Garrett's. And I don't even know, they just announced that they found some land, but, um, that, and Garrett, it's Garrett's something. Um, but they found, finally found some land that they're working on. And I'm just thinking of, you know, unique circumstances where people are trying to do something that's different than your standard AB and C house with a, with a clubhouse or something like that.
So to me, the problem with looking at the abnormal is that we just leave the, the ordinance like it is. So it's, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, I've already said with my view, my policy view of why I'm.
But then you get the density bonus and.
Wait, wait, let me just finish. So, so I think that my discussion is surrounding a public policy notion that I have about the rural character of our township. And, and, and these big, um, projects. And so, um, and now we're talking about all the possible things that we could use a PUD for. They haven't come up yet. And maybe, maybe if we're gonna talk about that, because we want to use a PUD concept in some way, maybe we need to think about how we restrict the PUD ordinance to say, some language that allows for that to happen. Instead of saying we can't change the ordinance at all, because we might want to do, in the world of infinite possibilities, this could happen or that could happen. And we want to have the flexibility to do that. I know we can't think of all the infinite possibilities, but it does come down to, I think our discussion, it does come down to, I'm not willing to forego large projects because there's a possibility there may be a good out there of an idea that you just talked about. Unless we can come up with some language that will allow for it.
But a PUD with no density bonus.
Preserves the rural character of the property. So that's the whole thing is that a PUD allows.
The density bonus.
Well, knowing it allows the conserva, for the conservation of open space, it requires it. And, um, if you had a, a traditional development, look what it looks like. So those are the things that kill the rural view. It look like they're part of the city.
So, so maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying. So you're saying if we get rid of the divi- density bonus.
They can't build any more dens.
That will address the issue that I raised.
Right. But we require that they have open space. So it ends up looking more rural.
I understand what you're saying. Thanks.
Because we're trying to do the same thing.
Rural character.
And again, and again, to, to talk about the, although the addities don't, the addities come up more often than you think. Remember the SiO rain, some, you remember the SiO rain project? That was that project on the west side of Z Road where they proposed very low dense, single family development. Um, I don't think they're asking for any density bonuses, but they also wanted to have small school. They wanted to also have a, um, a way to, they wanted to have a farm and some stables. And they wanted.
And a little daycare.
And they wanted to be able to sell some of the products that they grew on the farm. And so they had this idea that the people who were gonna live in this little area, send their kids to school in this simple area.
It was a daycare.
And they would have, they would have a farm and be able to sell farm products. And all of those uses are great. Some aren't permitted and some aren't, but they are not permitted together. And a PUD is like the only way that you can accommodate these sort of unique.
People come up with weird ideas.
That sounds cultish. Yeah.
That's my bias.
I don't want no cult.
But I don't think this one was cultish at all.
Did that one come off?
No, they haven't. Um, I think they're, they.
They own the. They're always very nice until they get a following. Jim Jones didn't start out giving people Kool-Aid.
Okay, so thoughts?
Well, I, I have a question, a follow-up for, uh, example Mr. Le, LeWan gave.
Uh huh.
Did the planning commission get to downsize the road in that example? Um, uh, at the intersection of SiO Church Road and Wagner?
Yeah.
They, the planning commission was able to downsize the road?
As part of the PUD.
I see.
Because they couldn't get, typically you'd get more splits, but because it was a PUD, it was done just for the, that number.
PUD can, you can essentially modify any, any part of the zone. It's as part of the PUD.
So a private road size is part, is in the zoning law. So.
Private road is a separate ordinance, but it was part of the PUD. It was, it was considered part of the PUD. It was considered part of that PUD plan.
Yeah, the requirement to make it a class A is over a certain length. But a driveway has to be class A or the E or C depending on the length.
And it's also based, yeah, and it's based on the number of splits that are possible.
Yes.
Not it, because you can't restrict that. But in a PUD, you can. It's done for X number of lots.
When can we pass our PUD statute or ordinance?
When's it been around? As long as I can remember. So it's been thirty years, you know, twenty-five years. So I, I think it's been tweaked a couple times, one way, but it's been. I think it's been tweaked a couple times, one way, but it's been.
So from a philosophical standpoint, where are we?
Exactly, how much should we think? I like having the flexibility.
Are you okay with taking out the density bonus?
We say density like it's a bad word.
No.
I like the density. Especially if we're getting something in exchange for the density. I don't have a problem with it.
I wanna drive the density to.
So if you get an EV station.
And.
You get your EV station, you're okay with whatever the urban development happens, the urban sprawl.
Some trails that, you know, we did all the, what they're proposing, so it all depends, you know.
So pathways, pathways are not urban. Okay, just so we understand. I get that people are all into the pathways and they view that as, I view that as exercise for our community, but I don't view that as creating rural nature on the community. But I hear you.
There are connections. There are connections to other, other sites and for future pathways, so. That's why.
You guys are traveling pathways all into Martin Row.
You know, that, I mean, that's, I mean, to Chris's point is you're not going to get any more contributions to pathways um, to connect any of these, um, outside areas from the developments, from the PUDs. Okay, so there is a.
A trade-off.
A trade-off there.
Yeah, and I suppose in thinking about it, this brings up another aspect of it. This pathway and connector point of view that is shared by many people in our community. I'm not so sure, I mean, that I think on the one hand, it connects people and it allows for exercise and that kind of thing. The trade-off on the other hand is that it creates more urbanization. And, um, so different ways of thinking.
So.
Your balance.
About where.
Um, I know where I'm leaning, but I'm, I'm leaning towards allowing them anywhere like they are now. Except no density bonus outside of the Water Service District. I could be convinced to just leave it the way it is. And maybe tweak some of the percentages of open area so that if we do allow higher density, we still get a lot of open space. I don't really know whether we're worrying. See, if we don't allow the density bonus, we guarantee we're gonna have more open space left.
Above that.
Right? But if we allow higher densities, then we ought to be requiring it even be more clustered so that you end up with more open space. Or at least as much as we would have without it. I don't know how to do that. So I'd be more inclined to just not allow the density bonus and be done with it.
And I, I have to say that one of the things that I'm interested in is pushing the density bonus in the Water Sewer District. And I don't wanna push a density bonus elsewhere. And, and, and so my, what's conflicting for me is I wanna drive the density.
Crossroads comes along.
Yeah, in, in, the crossroads kind of density in the Water Sewer District. And, and then, but I would not want any of that density elsewhere. And so I, that's what I worry about. I'd like to push that density bonus more and not, you know, and not have it elsewhere. Um, to really, you know, almost the, you know, that transit corridor kind of thing. That, not like Ann Arbor's density, but like the crossroads density, I think. You know, um, especially with that, and I think the idea of density, more density bonus for more open space is a really good concept. I, I think that's a really good concept, even, you know, in, you know, the, the Jackson Road corridor.
So all this green here is open space is a developed. And this is at the southern edge at Saddle Town, Saddle Church Road.
Yeah.
And so when we talk about the Water Sewer District, Liberty is part of the Water Sewer District.
No.
Yeah, there's, there's Liberty, there's, they're, yeah, that's how the Wagner, Liberty.
It was at Wagner.
But so is that Saddle View as well? Saddle View Apartments, or what are they called? The ones that are under construction over there.
There is, there is some sewer that goes, that touches it.
I think it touches with.
No, I mean, it goes to, to, it, it goes beyond Wagner.
It's, yeah, it's the, it's the.
West of Wagner, if you'd say.
Yeah, Polo Fields is on the sewer.
Yeah, Polo Hills, all of those, that housing out there.
But, but none of the, I mean, there really isn't a lot of undeveloped, if, if you look at the green, there's that one area off of Z, basically, that's in the Water Sewer District. If you look at that.
Green area?
Yeah.
You're talking about the pale green?
Yeah.
It's Z between Liberty and.
So what, here's, this is Liberty, right here, where these dots are, and then this is Saddle Church. So what I'm talking at, this property between Z and Saddle Church, all this green property, does the water district end at Z? Doesn't go any further than Z?
There's a red dash, there should be a red dash.
Yeah, the red dash?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, that's the Sewer Service District, and that, that, that line doesn't change, that line. Now, is that also the Water Service District?
Well, what we're saying is it's really the Sewer District. It's, it's not just the water only.
Yeah, so it's sewer only.
It's the sewer, water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
Well, it is that. It only says sanitary sewer, doesn't say. That's the sanitary sewer district.
It's not the water.
Water is, water is a much less determination, that's right. Because you don't need the area to get rid of, you need the area to get rid of water. In most places, now, the whole Gellman situation is another discussion for another day. But I've not heard of many places in South Township where anybody has a trouble drilling a well. I have heard plenty of places where people don't have proper soils for septic.
Correct.
You know, well, pretty much you're gonna find water in South Township if you drill, if you drill deep enough. But the soils will limit the number of.
So this green area, go back to my, on the south at the bottom of the map, that green area from Liberty, just east of Z, the light green area, that could be developed, because that would be part of the Sewer District. Does the Sewer District, does it go beyond Liberty? Okay.
This is.
I answered my own question. Gotcha.
And, and that crosshatch pattern is already protected. So wherever you see that crosshatch pattern, that's so, much of that green is already protected. Green block.
Cause it's like a lit line or something?
It's LPC protective easement. I mean, you can't, it's, it's like, it's either owned or there's, there's a preservation easement on it. So wherever, on this map, wherever you see the crosshatch, those are properties that are already protected through the preservation of either an easement or outright second chance.
And there's just not a lot of, when you look at the map, there's not a lot of PUDs in that area. There's one in the southwest corner, so. Is it just less likely that Ag Zone Land just doesn't come in for a PUD?
And there's, there's limitations. There's, there's, there's.
Yeah, Chris, so these would be the, you know, this is sort of what the road permission land. This one is the one that would be the most controversial right here. Because it's adjacent to this. And, but that's the one that's had the traffic issues. But, I mean, if you look at some, and then the other one that is, is this one. You know, that, it, you know, has large lots that has, you know, that's in the Sewer District. There are very few that are.
I'm done.
Okay. So, I mean, it's.
Some really good ideas, though. I really appreciate everybody's guidance.
Yeah, so it's somewhere in there.
Can I just say one more?
Yes.
The reason, so Chris, you said there's only that one little PUD, PUD in section thirty-one.
Yep.
Well, the reason that there are so few PUDs outside of your Sewer Service District even now are because they still have to follow the underlying zoning master plan. They're not getting, and, and that underlying zoning master plan, for the most part, outside the Sewer Service District, is too head-bank or metal. So there's not a lot of incentive or reason to do a PUD outside of those areas, unless it's some.
Much density there to be had.
Yeah, which is consistent with.
Yeah, and as I said last time, I know there's discussion and debate about how the master plan changed. But I will say that over the many years I've been involved here, the South Township follows their master plan. It's not a community that says, oh, in this case you're gonna follow, in this case you're not gonna follow. I mean, South Township has been very, very good about the master plan, which has helped the township stay out of court with land use issues. Um, you know, I have been.
I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, I've been, you know, I keep, I don't mean this in any bad humor, but, you know, I've been here almost thirty years. And we have had very few, you know, land use issues that have, that we've been taking into court on. Because we have been very strict about problems of following master plan. It's kind of a good by the sword, die by the sword. There's some communities that don't follow a master plan. But in some cases, when they find something objectionable, they try to follow a master plan. Well, guess what a developer is gonna do? A developer who's going to court is gonna FOAT every land use decision he's made for the last five years. You find out when you've been inconsistent with your own master plan, and they're gonna use that against you in court. South Township has been very consistent over the years I've been here, following their own master plan, which keeps us out of court. I have one last, one last question for tonight, because, because I have it, and it's a short one, but Doug, there's an area of, uh, we weren't revising, but I don't understand, and maybe I could get an explanation. It's on page, it's on page three, section thirty-six, two forty-eight. Design standards, A1, so open space preservation. About halfway through the first section there, not where you've added preservation of mature trees. It's over on the right-hand side of my printout anyways. It says while it is the intention, do you find where it says that? Okay. That the required open space be included in the project area. Up to fifty percent of the required open space may be non-contiguous with the project area. What is the project area and how can it be non-contiguous? Okay, this is, this is an effort. I'm sorry to, this is not. I'm sure I can leave it for another night, is it going to be too much? It's a little bit irritable, but there is a reason for it. I don't understand. It's, it has to do with, um, it has to do with, uh, uh, transfer development rights. And the state of Michigan allows for transfer development rights, which means you can take the development in one area and put it in, you can take the density in one area, place it in another area, if you're leaving another area open and preserved. So this recognizes the idea of transfer development rights. Where it would allow someone to actually preserve, let's say there's a. Oh, you mean on a separate piece of property? Yeah, totally separate piece of property. Oh, so I get credit for the. Yes. Giving you that, but I'm gonna develop this ten acres and you can have that three over there.
And you can apply that credit to a whole nother project?
Okay.
Oh, wow. And we would have to tighten that up, too.
Well, no one's ever done it, but it is, it recognizes the fact that the state of Michigan allows for transfer development. Okay, so this is a state requirement. Well, it's not a requirement, but it's, it's, it's something that the state discusses in the public act one time, which is the state management session. That we allow transfer development rights, so we put that in our PUD ordinance to recognize transfer development rights. Okay.
Okay, so we have our reports and our approval of minutes. And we don't, and just a, a couple, well, one, reports, we can make them relatively brief. Cause we have tap and preservation. The ordinance review hasn't met, and then we can ask you if you've had any deliberation about DDA. Service, service rep on DDA and, um, roads out here, so. Uh, and if, so let's quickly go through reports. Carlisle Wortman, do you have anything?
Um, the only thing I will say, because you want me to kind of hazard one.
Right, on what's.
On what's got in the hopper, that's what I.
Right, for you.
The main thing that's in the hopper that people should be aware of, people watching from home and people in the. Is that the Arberus Grove, uh, condo project on the east side of Z Road uh, did re, did apply for, um, take the detailed engineering review last week. So that is under review of the township engineer right now in our office. So that, remember, that was a project that had a lot of concern from residents about drainage and other issues. And that project, um, was recommended for approval for the site plan by the planning commission back in March. And we hadn't heard from them until last week. So that is in for detailed engineering review. I don't know anymore about it than that, except it's being currently under review. We won't see it, right? You will not see it if that goes directly to township change.
So does that? Is that related to the issue of all the water and drainage that the neighbors complained about? This detailed.
Yes.
Engineering review?
Yes.
So if we're gonna, so they're gonna ask us to approve that when they should be going to the, what is it, the?
They've already approved, you guys have already approved it, so.
No, no, no.
But the drainage, oh, they have to get, they have to get sign up from the water.
Water Resources.
Yeah, I mean, I thought that was like outside of the scope for us, that that would be something that they, what is it called again?
The, I mean.
Water Resources Commission.
Yeah, so the detailed engineering review process is the detailed, basically the detailed engineering construction. And so now, if you remember, the Arberus Grove people told us, yes, we can make this work. They said a lot more words in that, but they said, yes, we can make this work, and yes, the drainage is gonna work. Well, now they have to prove it. And so now, but now, we didn't have all the detailed information to make that, we, you know, we saw their plans. We get some preliminary information that said, yeah, maybe this can work, but now you have to come back with detailed engineering. Now, OJ Jones are good in the detailed engineering. I believe, I know Stacy's on, she's been patiently waiting, maybe she can chime in. But I believe that this is also going to be reviewed by the Water Resources Commission. So, so yes, this is, this is now where the rubber hits the road. Can they actually do what they said they were gonna do and meet all of the engineering standards of the township accounting? That's what's being checked right now. So that's where we're. Do they have formulas to calculate water absorption, uh, evaporation?
Not evaporate.
Well, trees, and they're, they, they get rid of water right now.
Well, they have, uh, well.
And they're gonna cut down a lot of trees, so, so if that is part of the calculation.
Well, but it is, it's all about, uh, as if it were a green space without trees, basically, I think I'm.
Yeah, but it isn't.
But, but, but it, you still get X amount of rainfall.
Yep.
So that's what it's based on, on different, um.
Well, I would suggest that, that's a good question for Stacy's perspective. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, and I think, Dan, I would want to say, actually.
Would you help us?
See, I'd love to see that, yeah.
Well, you, you'll be able to see, I mean, actually, it's there, if you want to, in the engineering.
You know, you have to go in. It isn't scanned and online right now, is it?
Uh, no, you can, you can check out a copy here.
Yeah.
It's available, no, it's not, nothing's online. But the paper, you know, paper copy is available for public viewing. It's, it's public document, it's open for observation.
Okay, anything else that has come in?
Nothing.
All right, Stacy.
So I gotta, I'm just gonna get, so Stacy, I, I didn't put you on as a, I just hit your, yeah, you, you, just your ability to participate. But you're not a panelist, unless you want to share anything, this is probably fine.
No, I'm actually just here tuning in, listening to the PUD discussion, and we actually don't have anything to report at this meeting.
Okay, tap.
Uh, we do have to leave this one set, four o'clock.
Anything more on the tap and the land merging the two committees?
There was a discussion.
Yeah, you, you may know more than I.
Well, I don't know about that. Discussion at the parks group about that being a possibility, and so the heads are talking together and nothing's been decided. But ultimately, it's going to be the board of trustees decides that. But the fact that we have a director of parks and pathways, I think, is in her title. It makes sense that she would become you know, part of both committees, and maybe we should just merge them, and we talked about how maybe it would be subcommittees would meet separately. I don't see how that's going to work. I, I I see it being merged, I just don't know what format they're going to take. The discussions are taking place.
Any more thoughts on DDA representation?
Uh, yeah, I think that I can do it.
All right, then we will, I'll make sure, I'm, I'm not sure who takes care of the DDA stuff, but I will introduce you then. And I think they just met today, so.
I'll give a report.
Yeah.
On the ZO C.
No, that, that, that's actually has to be at Doug's now. Bailey, like, yeah. Um, I, I just wanted to remind people that we have a special meeting on the twenty-ninth at seven in this room, and then we did also got approval to do on November fourteenth. It'll be, well, planning commission will end up probably being here, because we have a planning commission meeting that night, six thirty. Um, the environmental sustainability task force is going to do kind of their presentation and, and discussion of goals for an hour, about an hour and twenty-five minutes. And then we'll have our planning, a later planning commission.
Six thirty to eight?
Yeah, five to eight or something like that. We'll take a quick break.
The sustainability?
Yeah, the task force.
That's at six thirty.
Six thirty.
All right. Be good.
I lost internet for a minute.
Oh, okay. Um, this is the.
Sorry about that, public.
Um, the really kind of quick and twelve-page kind of overview of planning commission stuff, and then the toolkit that goes through say, plan review and kind of thing, so.
Oh, there's a little planning commission library.
All right, little library, yes. So right up on that shelf above the sink, and there's a little sign-up sheet, a sign-up sheet, so.
Can I take it home?
Yeah, so I will leave this out, because I bet there's be some people that want to check some things out.
Can I ask you a question? You said that the twenty-ninth was a special meeting. I thought the twenty-ninth was in lieu of our original, our, the twenty-sixth, which is our normal day.
Um, it was requested to be a special meeting by Heritage Woods.
So we're going to have a twenty-sixth as well?
No, the twenty, is it the twenty, is it the twenty?
Twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth.
So the twenty-sixth is Rashashana.
We discussed that.
We were gonna, we don't have a meeting, but this is a special meeting.
Right.
And do we know what it is they want to talk to us about?
The final, final PUD.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you could share with us, can you?
It's a final PUD.
But that wouldn't be a special meeting.
Well, they had their.
Oh, I remembered, because we were non-scheduled, yes.
Right, oh, yeah.
On the twenty-ninth, is that at eight P M? That's what I recorded.
No, the twenty eighth is a seven, it's a regular, yeah. Right. And so for the, the fourteenth, November fourteenth meeting, please, everybody, it's going to be on Zoom, so we'll need the, I guess we'll have, I guess we can have one Zoom here. Everybody else.
What, what are you asking, Chris?
I was going to suggest that people have their own.
Computer?
Computer, probably, it might be easier to view it, just in case we can't get the screen up, if we have any viewing problems, it'd be better if people had there.
So that meeting's going to be by Zoom?
Yeah, that one's by Zoom, but we're gonna convene at eight o'clock.
So you've got to be.
So we've got to be here.
No. Wait a minute, on the twenty-ninth, we're having a special.
Right, that's, that's.
For heritage, that's by Zoom?
No.
That's in person, okay.
Fourteenth.
Everybody else will be Zoom, we'll be here, just because we have to conduct our own. Our own meeting at eight.
So you're talking about.
From six thirty to eight, it'll be Zoom for the sustainability portion of the evening. And at eight, we got to.
We will convene our planning commission meeting.
And we have present for that, so you're probably ready.
Yeah.
So the, the sustainability meeting is by Zoom. Thank you.
Yep, sorry for.
Yeah, you can be here in the room.
Okay, the other thing I would encourage, I'll send out some information, but I encourage people to look at the Inflation Reduction Act and, and some of the benefits that are especially around building and, building and residential and stuff like that, because I think we have some opportunities there. That is my report. Okay, anyone have any other reports? And we'll go to minutes. Doug and I review these.
Are they okay? Am I quoted properly? Looking out for my welcome.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why are there some red line edits?
Because they didn't. It was supposed to go in as, but I think they just did our edits.
So they didn't have edits, but they're going to be incorporated before they're published, correct?
Correct, those are.
So many changes, though, they were edits after they've been approved. I mean, that's what it looks like. So, okay.
Yeah, those were the edits that Doug and I did to the original draft. Yeah, because it was hard, some of that discussion was hard to follow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I hope.
Take one of my convoluted compound questions.
That was pretty good.
I have a motion on the minutes.
I would move the minutes as presented with the edits incorporated.
There's a second, okay.
I'll second that.
Uh, supported by Commissioner Human. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, the minutes are approved as submitted with correct.
I'll give you a turn.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?